Don't let mosquitoes ruin your day. Fight the bite by removing standing water on your property. Standing water of any kind is a breeding ground for mosquitoes. Do your part and help reduce the mosquito population. For more tips and tricks, visit hcflgov.net/fightthebite.
Good evening. Welcome to the Board of County Commission Comprehensive Plan Amendment Public Hearing, Thursday, August 11th at 6:00 PM or 6:05. We have -- do I have any -- I don't see any indication that no one would be here, so I think we're good there. And if you'll -- please do a roll call vote, please.
Chair Overman.
Here.
Cohen.
Here.
Hagan.
Here.
Kim.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
White.
Here.
Thank you. I have a call.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Welcome to the Board of County Commission's Comprehensive Plan Public Hearing. The Board of County Commissioners will consider the transmittal of two comprehensive plan amendments for the review by the state land planning agencies. And the board will consider the adoption of several small-scale amendments to the future land use map of the comprehensive plan. The board will also concurrently consider a major modification to the plan development zoning of the property that is subject to a small-scale comprehensive plan amendment 2127. So I'll now request that the planning commission staff begin with the first item on our agenda.
Good evening, Commissioners. Melissa Linehart, Planning Commission Staff.
Where is everybody sitting? Thank you.
Thank you. Item A1, as you know, has been continued, so that we would start with item A2. So Jay Collins is here to present HCCPA 2208, which is the Housing Section Text Amendment.
Yes, ma'am.
I noticed that we had a couple of public comments signed up for A1, so you might want to make sure they know that item's being continued.
Okay. Can I get the public comment list?
I believe we had Ronald Weaver and Jacob Kramer for A1.
Excellent. Thank you very much. The first one on the list who signed up in person, which -- I'm not seeing anyone in person out there, was Ron Weaver. Is Ron Weaver online?
We are not seeing him.
They know. Okay. All right. We'll just recognize the fact that they did sign up to speak. And the second one that was signed up to speak on A1 was Jacob Kramer. Mr. Kramer, check in.
I don't believe they have checked in either.
Okay. That's good to know. Thank you very much for making that to my attention. Seeing as no one was here to speak on A1, we'll move on to A2, please.
Good evening, Commissioners. Jay Collins, Planning Commission Staff. Staff is here tonight to provide--
We can't hear you, sir. You are completely muffled. Have you got paper on your speaker? That's oftentimes the culprit.
Good evening. Can you hear me now, Commissioner?
It's still muffled, sir. All the paper has to come off the computer screen, off the keyboard.
Mr. Collins, if you--
I want to go into settings.
Try to change the microphone again.
Good evening. Can you hear me now?
No, we can't. It's worse, unfortunately.
Try to speak up again, sir.
Good evening. Can you hear me now?
That's better. It's definitely better. Thank you.
All right. I will certainly try to speak up. Good evening, Commissioners. Jay Collins, Planning Commission Staff. Staff is here tonight to provide for you information related to a transmittal public hearing. This is for HCCPA 22-08. This is the Housing Section, what would previously be the Housing Element. This is a required element of the Community Planning Act of the State of Florida under Chapter 163. This was last updated in 2008. We had a large group of staff members from Plan Hillsborough, the Planning Commission, as well as Hillsborough County, the Affordable Housing Services, Development Services, Community and Infrastructure Planning, Economic Development, and the County Attorney's Office. Aside from the folks that are in this building, we also met with folks outside of this building. We actually had a consultant that worked on the Affordable Housing Density Bonus. They conducted public meetings. We had a public meeting, a community meeting virtually, for the entirety of the Housing Section this past June. We also had some briefings with Commissioners, briefings with the Planning Commission as well. And we also met with folks such as Habitat for Humanity, as well as Blue Sky Communities. So updating the Housing Section, basically what you would do for any time you update an element, you're looking to streamline your goals, objectives, and policies. You're focusing on equal access through supply of the various objectives. Again, that's a requirement of the state. Something new, linking Housing and Transportation, which you'll find sprinkled throughout the comprehensive plan, as well as a revised Affordable Housing Density Bonus, which, as I mentioned earlier, Benesh, formerly Tindell Oliver and Associates, worked on that consulting contract. So there is one overarching goal of the Housing Section. There are seven objectives, and there are 89 policies. Obviously, those policies are in your packet. We will not be going through those policies tonight. Staff is prepared to answer any questions you may have. As you can see, there is a breakdown over here on this slide to show you that a little over a third are new policies, whereas basically about two-thirds of the proposed element are actually moved or slightly revised. So what is that goal? It's to ensure fair and equal access to housing for all peoples in Hillsborough County while accounting for population growth, climate change, and affordability. Again, population growth and affordability requirements from the state, and climate change is an innovative look at housing and how we can better serve Hillsborough County now and in the future. So these are basically talking points of those seven objectives that you'll see. Range of housing options, development incentives, density bonuses, finance strategies, all basic bread-and-butter things. Linking Housing and Transportation, mentioned that earlier, is something that is new for the Housing Section. Equal access, a requirement. Sustainable and innovative housing, again, something that we look for, that I would expect anybody would challenge us to provide, sustainable and innovative housing policies. These are the actual objectives themselves, where you can see those seven talking points that we just mentioned, and how they actually fit within the actual objectives. We're going to take a little bit of time to actually go over Objective Number Three. Density bonuses will be utilized as an incentive to encourage the development of more affordable housing. Again, the State of Florida requires that the Housing Section look for affordability options for folks at low, very low, and median housing. So specifically, the Affordable Housing Density Bonus looks to move densities from one category, and I should say it does this as a mimic. So you're not actually moving a category, you're just moving the density. And this is an existing policy structure that exists today in the plan, but what we were looking for was ways in which we thought we might be able to make this better, and in fact, better serve the residents of Hillsborough County, as well as get some interest in this actual policy, since there's only been a handful of times that this has actually been used in the last decade or so. So again, the base structure moves to mimic the next category. That's pretty much what it is today. However, you do see a little bit of movement at the upper end, where instead of going to 30 units to the acre, you're going to 35 units to the acre. The affordability term increases from 15 years to 30 years. And again, working with Affordable Housing Services, they saw this as something that is paramount. The minimum 20% of the proposed development shall be affordable. That's unchanged. So today, if you use this bonus in your proposing 100 units, 20 of those units as a minimum shall be affordable. The maximum AMI is increased from 80% to 120. AMI is area median income. So if you have 100 as your universe, 50. What's that in the middle? That's your median. So what we're looking for there is to say that, and we'll talk about this on the next slide, but how there is a movement of basically folks can't afford certain housing that we have in Hillsborough County. Now, what's new to that, though, are minimum set-asides. So currently today, it's an 80% regardless. So what we are looking for as a proposed is to say that there's a bucket. That bucket, 60% AMI, 80% AMI, then 120% AMI. And you would have to move from bucket to bucket, meaning I have to fill the 60% bucket before I can move to the 80% bucket. And these are minimums that you would need to fill. They are not a requirement to say that you can't go above and beyond that bucket. So if you, as an affordable housing developer, would like to do more than 20% of your proposed development, or if you would like to do all of your AMI set aside at 60%, you may do so. So this is a little bit of that breakdown that I was talking about, and this is something that statisticians will tell you is a little bit of a difficult thing to do when we have this conversation, because I have two different data sets from two different years. So what you see here as the AMI breakdown, these are $20.22. This is from HUD. So if you look at that 100% AMI for one-person household and a two-person household, and then look at the dollars it costs in rent in Riverview and Brandon, you're going, well, that's right baseline, or you're not making it. Well, that rent number over there is actually from the American Community Survey in 2020. So basically, what we're showing in this graphic is that the money that's in people's pockets in 2022 is having difficulty affording rent in 2020. So the American Community Survey is not something that comes out month-to-month or even year-to-year. This comes out by the Census Bureau ever so many years, three years, five years. But what we do have is we can look at things such as Zillow. Zillow actually says that right now, the rents in Riverview are $1,900 a month, Brandon $1,600 a month. Is Zillow and the ACS apples-to-apples? No, not at all. But that's not the important thing here. It's not to say that Riverview's rent is $1,900. It's to say that the rent is increasing, which means the AMIs that people are using to actually get into those rents, there's a disconnect and it's widening. So moving on, we did not receive objections from any reviewing agencies, as you can see here. The proposed policy is consistent with all adopted sections of the unincorporated Hillsborough County's Comprehensive Plan. To dive down a little bit into it, Housing Goal Two, promote and assist in the provision of an ample housing supply within a broad range of types and price levels to meet current and projected housing needs, so that all Hillsborough County residents have an opportunity to purchase or rent standard housing. And from the Future Land Use, Objective 21, the county will encourage innovative means of providing housing. A little bit of where we've been, where we are, and where we're going. This past Monday, August 8th, we had a public hearing with the Hillsborough County Planning Commission. The Planning Commission did find the Housing Section consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the plan. And we do hope that you received an updated resolution from the Planning Commission to this effect earlier tonight. Here we are tonight at a transmittal hearing. In September, if this body should decide to transmit, we would have our state and regional agency reviews, and we would expect to come back before this body, October 13th, for an adoption hearing. And with that, the recommendation is for the County Commission to adopt a resolution directing staff to transmit HCCPA 2208 to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity and other state and local agencies for their review and comment as required by Chapter 163 of Florida statutes. I thank you for your time. This concludes my presentation, and I am available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I truly appreciate that. We are in the process of actually addressing public comment. We do have one speaker that was signed up to speak to A2, and that's Elise Batzel, but it doesn't indicate whether or not she's in person, although I don't see anyone here. So I'm assuming that she is potentially attending virtually. Is she available?
Yes, ma'am. Elise Batzel, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go right ahead.
Good evening. We just wanted to, the team from Sterns, Weaver, Miller, applaud the Planning Commission and let them know how thoughtful and pragmatic this proposal is. Many times, we come and criticize what's happening with the Land Development Code and the Comprehensive Plan, but we really wanted to take time to applaud your staff, and this is such a great staff in the right direction. We specifically wanted to applaud recognizing the 80% to 120% attainable housing category. And in the future, we would encourage you to look at additional kind of relief for affordable housing. We represent a lot of affordable housing developers, and if you get the density on the site, sometimes it's hard to fit the density. So perhaps at a later time, you can consider relief in such dimensional criteria as setbacks, parking, and height issues as well. So we appreciate your time to address the board tonight.
Excellent. Thank you very much. We don't have anyone else signed up to speak to this item, so I'll open it up for board discussion. And the first one to ask to speak, and we recognize, is Commissioner Smith.
Thank you. And all I hear about the reason to increase the cap from 80% to 120% is mostly the development community saying it doesn't pencil out for them as well unless they're allowed to have higher. But, you know, from my perspective, the need is with the lower income. I mean, we have people on the verge of homelessness, and until we've really done all we can for those making 50 and 80% AMI, I just don't want to give away too much. What I, you know, understanding that this is the staff recommendation and this is the direction, I would still like to see if there is board agreement with me to at least try doing this in a smaller step. The jump from 80% to 120% is very big, from 80% to 120%. And, you know, when you think about, what's 100% AMI? That's the average. That is the average median income for people in our county. 120%, and you're talking about people who are making more than the, above-average. I really would rather focus on the below-average with our scarce, you know, incentives and things that we can give away and PAC fee waivers. These are, some of these are subsidies, some of these are other kinds of incentives. And pass this with, just as is, but with a cap. And pass this with, just as is, but with a cap of 100%. That's going up in a step. And here's another thing. If we go up to 120% now, it will be a lot harder to bring it back down to 100 if we have a whole lot of people taking advantage of this, but find, you know, the need is still very great in the 50 and 80. We might find ourselves wishing that we hadn't bumped it up so fast. But if we bump it up to 100 first, and then we see there's still problem getting people to take advantage of it, we could come back in, you know, next year and raise it up to 120, if that's what needed to be done. I'd rather do it incrementally up than find we've given away too much, and we're housing, you know, we're not housing enough of the really most needy in our community. I understand that, as I've talked to Planning Commission staff, Mr. Collins, about this extensively, he has offered that it might be, it might make sense to put it down to 100% if we adjust, tweak a couple of the other levers, like parking and setbacks and maybe additional density. And so I think, and he said that could be done, staff could do that between transmittal and adoption. So what I'd like to propose is that we, and this would be my motion, to adopt this, but with everything except for 100%, bring the cap down to 100% for this time, and then keep our minds open when it comes back for adoption to any tweaking of those other levers, parking or whatever, to make it pencil out at 100%. That's my motion.
Second? We have a motion by Commissioner Smith, a second by Commissioner Kemp. Commissioner White, you're recognized.
Thank you, Commissioner Overman. Commissioner Smith, I'll tell you, the affordable housing policy is not in my wheelhouse, never have been, never has been. The entire time I've been on this board, there have always been other commissioners that have championed affordable housing policy. With that being said, though, I can recall in the past, during some briefings on affordable housing policy, that some experts have said just that, that it's best to focus on those folks with a lower percentage of AMI. So based upon what I've been told in the past by experts, I'll be supporting your motion.
Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
Thank you. And I just have to say, I have, in all the years I've been here, I keep looking at this because it's kind of the way all the tables go, and I have asked about that before. It's kind of the default tables that they do. It's like 60, 80, and then it goes to 120%. And I've always asked, I don't understand. Where's the 100%? Why isn't the 100% there? And I'm glad, I think, this does look like an improvement over what we had. I do understand that it's, that the best, best for everyone to have a mix within your units of different average median incomes, and that that is a good thing for your multifamily use, that you do that. But the, you know, why 120% of median income instead of 100%? I don't know. I've looked from year to year, every year, they do a two-year census, and they had, at least the last time I saw it, and for at least three or four of the last times, and I didn't have it here with me now, but in the entire nation, of the 25 top metro areas with the average median incomes, Tampa, Tampa was last of the 25 out of 25. We were behind Orlando, we were behind Miami, but we were like 6,000 behind Detroit and 11,000 behind Atlanta. I think it's really important for us to look at, our wages have always been low, maybe it's starting to move up a little here, but this is for 30 years, and I think it's a really good approach to be thinking, well, maybe if we see the formula doesn't work and we're not getting what we need, then we can think about something else. But I have thought about this a lot. It puts the 20 and 30% means 50% of the multifamily will be in the 60 and 80% range, but then 50% will be in 120%. So it doesn't really make sense to me as a strategy. I'd rather try a more conservative approach first and see what we come. And I think it's, you know, I have asked a few affordable housing developers as well about this, and asked them, what, you know, do we really need 120%? And I've been pretty convinced that actually 80% is a good target. That may not be true anymore, and I'm not sure, but I like 100%.
Okay. Commissioner Collins? Commissioner Myers?
Yes, thank you. Well, you know, I look at it as it's a range. And I think it was in December when we approved the health care plan up to 175% of the median income. So if we cap this at 100, and someone comes in at 105, then they don't have the opportunity to get a house. But if it's in that range between 80 and 120%, they could qualify. So I just want to bring that to our attention, that we would be denying those that are income eligible not to be able to afford. I just share that with us.
Commissioner Collins?
Well, I guess the only question I would ask then is, how difficult would it be to raise it down the road? Is this, would this require an entirely new process, or is this the kind of small change that can be done by the board?
Stan?
It's my understanding that we'll require a new text amendment, so we would need to augment the housing section subsequently to make that change.
Okay. But I mean, what would that, that's a couple of months? Is that generally the?
Six-month process, yes.
Okay. So, you know, I think if we go in this direction, just be cognizant of the fact that if you want to make a change, it's going to take about six months to do it. But I don't, I'm really interested, Commissioner Overman.
Thank you. I'm being very, very patient here for a lot of reasons. You know, I have spent a great deal of time living in the Affordable Housing Department, just trying to understand how to make the metrics work. If we could get the slide that shows the densities and the minimums up, I want to kind of point out an opportunity here that addresses, I think, some of your concerns. The one that actually goes through the minimums, yeah, the one, I think it's just before that one, just before that one. This one. One of the differences in what we've been doing in the past versus what we're doing here is while we're keeping the minimum 20% at proposed development cost, we're actually setting aside a minimum for the lower levels of average median income. And when you do that, and you have no less than, you know, set-asides for less than 60% and set-asides for less than 80% to get the densities, it does put some pressure on making the numbers work. You still have market rate apartments in these communities. And it allows us to actually get more in the 60 and 80% when those set-asides are there, but it oftentimes does need to have a little more wiggle room on the top range to allow those individuals that suddenly become able to get 100% AMI and then get a raise to no longer qualify to rent there, and they have to move. So there's a segment of our communities that are finally getting to a place where they get okay, and because they suddenly get okay, they no longer qualify for any of the assistance to help them stay. And that's problematic for stabilizing communities. There's been a lot of work here to get these numbers where it makes sense, not only for what we need, but also to attract the investors in our community that are willing to work with us on affordable housing. So while I do appreciate that I would love to see a greater target go at the 100% AMI, we only set aside $10 million a year for 100%, and that limits those dollars that can go there, that can invest in those deals. So we have to find monies from other places when we're looking to do 120. So that's going to limit how many 120s we're going to get, because we only set aside 10 million, and we only get about 11 million from the state, as it stands now, because the Sodowsky Trust has been swept by 50% permanently until we're able to get that changed. But it does limit the amount of dollars that we have to help make these things work, so that we can stabilize the workforce in our community, that is, you know, that is a very important part of our economy. And I would rather see us stay at the 120 and see how that works, rather than go to the 100. But if it means it won't get passed, and I get outvoted again, you know, I don't want to go there, but I would like to, I'd like to approve it as it's been presented by the professionals that are in the affordable housing industry, not only our professionals and our staff, but the industry that's worked really hard with our Planning Commission to come up with numbers that are workable for the industry. And as you know, I've continued to say, I need units. We need units more than anything right now, and I won't want anything that would cause a barrier to getting that done at this point, within reason, obviously. You know, we have plenty of market rate out there, and those rent rates are starting to get a little softer, which is good, but that's not going to stop it to be able to address the set-aside that's possible with this plan as it's being presented for the 60% and the AMI, and the 80% AMI. So, I mean, I'll support the motion, but I really would prefer to offer a substitute motion to consider the policy as it stands, with a higher level at 120. And then if we find that we're not getting the lower numbers, that we could revisit this in six months, so that we can address what we really need to do as far as planning in the affordable housing area. So that's my motion. Actually, I needed to hand it to you. I'm offering a substitute motion, I apologize. Second?
Well, we have a substitute motion to adopt the amendment as-is. And I will just offer as part of the, so the gavel's passed to me, but I will offer, you know, I'll just, because it's not my motion anymore, so I'll hang on to it, and I'll just say, I won't be supporting this, and if it fails, I will be supporting the original motion. A few more points I'll offer is that, in the first place, it's a lot easier to ratchet up entitlements than it is to ratchet them down. It's almost downplanning and taking people's entitlements. If you've given their property the rights to have, you know, a little bit easier route to this extra density bonus, and then you take it back, we're going to have like a lot of opposition and maybe even some legal problems in coming down. Whereas if we go up a step and then decide, six months from now, a year from now, this isn't working, we'll go higher, nobody's going to complain, you know, and nobody's going to fuss about it, and we haven't taken anything from anybody. I've seen, you know, so many times, this sort of downplanning or a taking be an objection. It's just going to be a lot easier to go in that direction than to think we could have had more affordable housing for the lowest, lower incomes if we'd started slower. Keep in mind that of any project, only 20% is going to be affordable. They can say a minimum of 20%, but you're going to get the minimum. So if you have 100 units, which would be big, you're going to get 20 of them be in the affordable range. Now, if the cap is lower, more of those houses will be available to the 100% and below. We'll be helping more of the needier people. So, and I will, you know, just reiterate that I have talked to Planning Commission staff, Mr. Collins, and thought that if we were to bring this cap down, there are ways to make it pencil out. If they go back to the consultants' tools and levers that were there, that project, where you put something in and something else comes out, and you tweak the parking, and you tweak the density, and then it could be more pencil-able. So, and they've assured me that that can be done between transmittal and adoption, and so we would, you know, be, hopefully, my idea was to pass it at the lower level, then when it comes back after transmittal, see what suggestions Planning Commission staff had had about tweaking some of those levers to make it work for the development community. But starting out, we do end up with a few more of those 20 units being available for people who are a little lower income than 120. So that's just where my heart is. And with that, seeing?
Can I ask a question? I just, I want to ask Planning Commission staff. So if we go with 100, and we come back and we tweak, or if we go with 120, and we come back and we tweak the other provisions that actually make the opportunity for the county not to have to put as much in the deal to make it work, that's really what this boils down to, and we are limited in the resources that we have, which limits the number of deals we can do, because we only have one 9% credit, tax credit deal we can do, and we split that with the city of Tampa. We have some 4% tax credits, and those matter. And then we have, hopefully, the Community Land Trust will branch it up, you know, another year or so or two, where they'll be able to actually start helping us in those areas. But that's a year or two down the road, and we are 55,000 units shy at the 80% AMI level. And that's using old numbers. The numbers that we saw in this show numbers that are significantly less what the reality looks like right now. So I do hear that there's a desire to make sure that we take care of the lower AMI, which right now is a very low number as compared to the rents out there. But if we were to stay at 120 and found ways to tweak that would allow us to move to 100, could we do that in this process before, when we come back in October for approval? Or would that be too big of a move to go from 100 to 120 in October? How is the state going to review that kind of change in the plan?
It is my understanding that minor changes can be made between transmittal and adoption, but I would ask Johanna, Ms. Lundgren, perhaps, if you had an opinion, if they transmitted the 120 and went down to 100, would that be a significant shift enough to not be minor in nature any longer?
Or either direction?
Right. My understanding from the way DEO views such a change was that that would be allowable. Certainly, we can take a closer look, but that would be my assumption.
Okay. That we could make those kinds of modifications, whether we do it at 100 or 120? Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
Thank you. And I think it's, the point you made, and I'm not sure it's very clear, about you have 100 units under this. 10 of your units are affordable, that's it, 10. And five of those will be 120%.
20.
20 units.
20, 20%.
20 units.
Okay, 20 units, sorry. And 10 of those, I'm sorry, 10 of those will be 120%.
Right.
And 10 will be 80% or less. Out of 100 units, I just, you know, I think it's just much more wise to do the 100% tops than you have 20 units and in... And in, Commissioner Myers, I mean, there will be the other units available. In fact, before we had our recent crush, I used to, when they came in with 120%, I mean, you could find rents all over the place for less than that. And it may be a time in the future, too, when we do start to normalize to something a little bit different than the crush we're seeing now, I just really think it is wise for us to move more conservatively on this and see how it works at, you know, at the 100% range. Because we are, as I mistakenly said first, but I'll say it correctly now, 100 units, 20 affordable, 10 of those are at 120%. Only 10 are at 80% or less. I mean, and, you know, I think we should see if that works to generate what we want.
Commissioner Cohen, you're recognized.
I just, first of all, want to tell you both that I really appreciate both of your arguments and that actually you both made a lot of sense, which makes it difficult to make a decision about what to do. It does seem to me, though, that regardless of what we do, we can spend some time over the next month or two with our staff figuring out what makes the most sense and move it forward or back depending. I wonder if maybe, not to split hairs too much, maybe you go with 110, and that way, if you're going to move it up or down, it's only a 10% variance later, and at least you've sort of, in a minor way, addressed both of your issues because neither of your arguments are, I mean, they're both right. So maybe that's, maybe we could just do it that way and then decide in the next month whether to move it up or down when it comes back finally.
Commissioner Overman.
That makes a lot of sense in some respects. However, a lot of the calculations are all based on those ratchets that we've got. So picking something other than what is normal, which is 100 to 120, would require a little more calculation, but I don't think it's unreasonable to try and figure out. I'd also like to ask, based on the chart, because I don't have the full plan in front of me, that, based on the example that Commissioner Kemp so eloquently offered, is the 20% that is the minimum, then is it accurate? What is the, in that particular case, what would be the minimum set aside for the 60% in that particular case?
I'm going to pass on to the expert, Jay Collins, for him to answer that question.
Yeah, Mr. Collins.
I do know you do 60, 80, and then the 100 or 120 in that order, but I would like you to talk about the percentage.
I just, I want to make sure I'm getting, I'm having, you know, making sure I'm understanding exactly how the numbers would work, and I don't have the chart right in front of me to always refer to, like I always do.
And Commissioner Jay Collins, Planning Commission, if I may. So 20 units affordable as a set aside, 30% of those would be 60% AMI or less, that's six. 20% would be 80% or less, that's four. Then what's left over, being 10 in this example, would be 120% or less. So one of the things that's imperative in all of this is that currently it is 80% or less, meaning that currently today, somebody could do all of their affordable units at 80. So allowing a bucket at 60% means that there is a provision for additional folks at that lower end. So bringing that number up towards that 120, again, is what that does on that leveling. One of the things that we've had with all of this is, in the last decade or so, we've only had this used seven times. So the idea of what we're doing here is to try to expand the number of opportunities for folks to actually utilize this. It is our hope that instead of getting a handful of these, we might get many of them, and in which case, we might be able to see in the future that we've actually provided more housing at that 60 and 80% level than we would have otherwise had at the 80% that is today. Thank you, that's all.
Thank you, and that's what I was looking for, to have a better understanding of how the metrics work, but also how it impacts the economics. Because we haven't had a lot of the deals with our current plan work. And while I do have an aspiration of addressing housing at the lower incomes, we need housing. So I was hoping that we could consider the motion, and if it fails, we'll take a good compromise.
Commissioner Kemp, are you in the queue still?
I was just going to respond to that, but four to six. And I was saying, I was not even, yeah. It's just good for us to know out of 100 that we're only talking about 10 that are below 100%. That's it. And only four that are below, or I don't know whether I had the calculations for 20 and 30%, but it's really de minimis. I don't think we have a problem, honestly, with units being built because we're having, I'm not talking about multifamily, but we're having, we're being swept, like, the fact, we are being hit with housing all over the place, and in the City of Tampa as well. There's units being built for accommodating lots of people. But, you know, the sweep of growth here is enormous. It's, as we know, bigger than almost any place in the nation. And as I've said many times, you know, if growth paid for itself, we'd be rolling in cash. It's not doing that. We're having to work for infrastructure. I'm not sure that we can provide for everybody that wants to come, because you couldn't almost build much faster than we're going. I don't think the problem is building units. I think the problem is very much affordable housing, and that's the problem all over the country. So I just really like to cap it at the 100%.
Thank you. And seeing no other comments, we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Overman, second by Commissioner Myers. Let's take a roll call vote because we're high. Chair Overman.
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
No.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
No.
White?
No.
Thank you. Motion carried. Four to three, Commissioners Kemp, Smith, and White voted no.
Thank you. Gavel back to you. Commissioner Overman.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And we'll tweak the numbers between now and October, I'm sure. Thank you very much. With that, we --
Question. I mean, we can take this up when it comes back to us for adoption. So we have an opportunity to talk to our staff about this and change it at the end if we want to.
Yeah, and then really talk with the lenders and all of the folks in the industry to see what's possible. Because I really would like to have that conversation, just to make sure we're on target. So we need to vote to consider the resolution for the transmittal, for the state to review this, for CPA 2208, for approved for adoption should be included in the motion.
Move to transmit.
We have a motion by Commissioner Cohen, a second by Commissioner Myers. Please take a roll call vote.
Chair Overman?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried, seven to zero.
Excellent. Thank you. Planning Commission to cover small-scale amendment item in the second part of the agenda. We're looking at the small-scale amendment and the major modification to a plan development zoning, item B1A, HCCPA 2127.
Yes, Ms. Carla Yanos is online and will present that item. Thank you.
Let me share my screen. And please confirm if you see my screen.
We can see it.
Again, this is Agenda Item B1. This is a comprehensive plan amendment. So first staff will present this plan amendment, and then after the presentation has concluded, we will hear from Development Services for the rezoning application, or the concurrent rezoning application that was suggested from the previous public hearing that we had. That item is the next one following, which is B1B, and I will be present in case you have any questions during both presentations. So, good afternoon, Carla Yanos with Planning Commission. This is a comprehensive plan amendment, 2127 State Route 60 in Miller Road. The project is a privately initiated small-scale comprehensive plan amendment. It started in the October 2021 plan amendment cycle, and the project went before the Planning Commission on January 10, 2022, and was given a recommendation of approval with a vote of seven to zero. The project did go before the Board of County Commissioners on January 13, 2022, and at the end, at the direction of the board, the project was continued to allow for a concurrent rezoning. The rezoning application for major modification 22-0689 was presented before the zoning hearing master on June 13, 2022, and was given a recommendation of approval. The general location of the subject site, for example, is approximately, let's give you the acreage, 18.4 acres, first of all, and it's located in the middle of, or the eastern part of the county. And the project is not within a community plan, but it is near the Val Rico and Brandon communities for locational purposes. And the property is located within the urban service area. So it is this plan amendment, and this is the map from the October 2021 cycle, and this is the plan amendment over here. For you, you'll see an area on your screen. The property is located southwest of Miller Road and State Route 60 intersection. The State Route 60 is a principal arterial road, and Miller Road is a county collector. On the north and south side of State Route 60 is non-residential use, as you see on the screen. These non-residential uses are composed of retail, personal services, and office. There's a Hungry Howies and a Winn-Dixie shopping plaza at the southeast corner of South Miller Road and State Route 60, which is this area here where I'm pointing with my mouse, and a US Postal Office, a three-story glass building is located to the north, which is over here, this area. And to the northeast is an auto parts store, a self-storage facility, which is over here, this area, and it also has like a gas station and several auto mechanic body shops. Now, south of the property is single-family detached homes in the Val Rico Forest subdivision. And to the west of the property is vacant commercial lands, followed by the Oak Valley multifamily and the proposed RES 20. So this is the multifamily, and this is a proposed RES 20 under another CPA number. So, and then over here on this side, you'll have another retail plaza as well. So there's several, as you can see on the screen, there's several commercial non-residential uses along State Route 60. And then as you get past, I would say, a good 500 to 700 feet from State Route 60 to the south, you'll start seeing single family. Before you, you'll see some pictures that we took on a site visit. So as mentioned before, the property has frontage on State Route 60. This is the entrance of the property, so it's heavily wooded, as you can see on the screen. And then here, you'll see the property to the left of the screen, and then State Route 60 is to the right. But basically, what you're looking at is the entrance of the property in relation to State Route 60. Here we have a picture of the intersection of Miller Road and State Route 60. And the next picture is heading southbound on Miller Road, which is adjacent to the property. The existing future land use category of the property is residential four and residential nine. Now, residential four future land use category allows four dwelling units an acre, 0.25 FAR, and typical uses are residential, suburban scale, neighborhood, commercial, office uses, multi-purpose projects. Residential nine provides nine dwelling units to the acre and 0.50 FAR. Again, the typical uses there are residential, urban scale, neighborhood, commercial, office uses, and multi-purpose projects, mixed-use developments as well. Now, the proposed future land use, what they're trying to do is go to RES 20. So under RES 20, you're allowed 20 dwelling units an acre and an FAR of 0.75. It is a slight increase. There is a limitation, though, on retail, up to 0.35. Now, typical uses are residential, neighborhood, commercial, office uses, multi-purpose projects, and mixed-use developments, very similar to the residential nine category. The property is surrounded by residential nine future land use. However, to the north is residential six, to the south is residential four, and to the east is office commercial 20. And then three parcels to the west of the subject site is a proposal for RES 20, obviously, under HCCPA 2021-26. And the RES 20 exists to the east of the property near St. Cloud Avenue. On this next slide, staff analyzed the impacts of the plan amendment. So on the left side of the screen, you'll see RES four and RES nine, which is the existing and the maximum that they're allowed. So the maximum that they're allowed is 119 dwelling units and approximately 300,000 square feet of non-residential use. Now, the proposed future land use category allows residential, under residential 2020 dwelling units an acre. So the max allowed under that category is 369 dwelling units and approximately 600,000 square feet of non-residential. Now, what is the difference? So it allow, it's going to allow, under the proposed RES 20, it's going to allow mixed-use development on all of the property, not just a portion like it exists now. If they were developing under the existing conditions, technically RES nine would allow the mixed use, but only in that RES nine area. Now, it also is going to increase the non-residential maximum square footage that they can get, which is approximately 300,000 square feet, increase, and then it's going to increase the dwelling units by 250 dwelling units. Again, this is maximum. We will hear the other side during the rezoning of what exactly the applicant is proposing. Staff has reviewed and found the request consistent with the comprehensive plan policies. Overall, we looked at the urban service area, objectives one, policies 1.2, 1.3, 1.4, timing of growth, we looked at those policies as well, and we found it consistent. We do know that the property has frontage on an arterial road and a collector. It's in the urban service area, and it has capacity to be served by all the urban infrastructure. It provides a good transition between commercial and medium-density residential. Now, on the second facet of consistency review, we found that, you know, again, it does have all the public facilities available, so we looked at objective 12, policy 12.1 and 12.7. And then we also looked at the neighborhood community development, objective 16, and the concurrent policies afterward. And we did find it all consistent with that, and it was very detailed in the staff report that we provided, both during the rezoning and during the comprehensive plan amendment. At this point, staff, obviously, you know, took this before the Planning Commission on January 10, again, 2022. They did give a vote or a recommendation of approval for seven to zero, and now we're coming back because it has a concurrent rezoning. So at this point in time, Planning Commission does recommend that HCCPA 22-10 be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the future of Hillsborough, comprehensive plan for unincorporated Hillsborough County, and recommends forwarding this recommendation to the Board of County Commissioner. Now, this essentially concludes my part of the presentation, and I'll be glad to answer any questions you have for the comprehensive side, or if you want to hold off and hear the rezoning application and then ask the questions, it is totally up to you, Commissioners. I will stand if you have anything.
Okay. Do we, actually, at this point, we would actually hear from the applicant, and then we could address questions after the public hearing comments? Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you very much for your presentation. That was great. Is the applicant present?
Yes, ma'am. Can you hear me and see me, Elise Bassel, Jones Weaver Miller?
Yes, and you have three minutes, ma'am.
We have several applicants to speak this evening that I think are all registered. In the interest of time, I'm happy to go through all the points just to save time, if that's okay with you.
It's fine with me. The public speakers, however, do have to limit their testimony to the comprehensive plan amendment, so, because the zoning is coming later, but please proceed.
Understood. Thank you. We'll go quickly, and we'll try not to be duplicative when the zoning comes back. Can you see my screen?
I cannot.
Hey, could you help me here, Pat?
Yes, if you click the share button. Oh, we can see it.
There we go. Okay, great.
We can see it now. You may proceed.
Obviously, the team members are available to answer any questions that you have. Again, this is on 18.48 acres. You know the location. We really want to concentrate a little bit more about -- Uh, we really wanna concentrate a little bit more about this being the ideal residential infill site, located in Val Rico and with, well within the urban service area. As you may recall, this came back before you, so our request tonight is to amend this parcel to R twenty. It is not located in the Brandon Community Plan. And it is a proposed infill comp plan amendment. As you've heard from staff, State Route sixty is a major commercial corridor supporting a mixture of retail, commercial, industrial, and high-density residential uses. That's something that's really needed in our community, as well as missing along this corridor at the moment. This is a picture of the future land use map. And I'll stop here for just a moment. Um, this really illustrates the nature of this mix along State Road sixty. Uh, our project would infill the residential uses in the immediate vicinity of many of the existing commercial uses. We always talk about locating residential, particularly multifamily residential, in close proximity to commercial, so people don't have to get in their cars and drive. Again, just another support of that live-work-play environment. As you can see, there's a concentration of OC twenty to the west and OC, I'm sorry, R twenty and OC twenty to the east near the CSX rail line, we'll talk about that in just a moment. But one of the things that I think is most important is to say that the Planning Commission staff found that, based on the existing development pattern, which you can see clearly illustrated on this map, the proposed change would allow uses that are comparable and compatible with the existing uses in the area. These statistics are already in the staff report, but I will, won't go ahead all the way through them, but I do want to say that it would be an increase of the potential of two hundred and four dwelling units. I think Carla may have misspoken in her presentation, um, but if you do the math, it's only two hundred and four dwelling units. This is an area that is targeted for growth in your vision map. The project furthers the intent and the objectives of the policies of this vision map. And specifically, the vision map says that this is in an area that is envisioned for high-intensity suburban, and that's multifamily. As you know, this area is targeted for growth. Uh, the change supports the need for this additional housing. The Planning Commission, by their statistics, say that Brandon is expected to grow by twenty-four thousand seven hundred ninety-five people by twenty forty-five, and we need to find a place for them to live. Uh, this is a map that I think shows a little better, just because of the color, all of the things that are around this area. If you look directly to the east, you've got a barber shop, a Winn-Dixie. You've got shops, um, directly across the interstate, there's, I mean, uh, State Route sixty. You've got storage-based, advanced auto parts, an office building, a pharmacy, a diner. Directly to the east on the corner, there's the Speedway, a CBS. This area has intense commercial development. It's also really important that the closest heart bus route is forty-six on Brandon Boulevard, but the current heart transit development plan does identify a need for bus rapid transit along this area. It is in their ten-year unfunded plan, but the vision is to have bus service in this area. The other thing that's important is, as we look forward in our comprehensive plan, is if we do get light rail, there is a CSX rail line just to the east. And again, throughout our comprehensive plan, we're looking for opportunities to have more intense residential development near commercial and near potential multimodal, um, transportation areas, including a rail line. I think it's important for you to understand the walkability of this area. Uh, this is a map of all of the surrounding sidewalks. So as of today, when, when this development goes in, this, all of these green areas will be walkable. These are existing sidewalks or sidewalks that the developer would put in if the project were approved. That's exactly what you want when you have residential come into an area. You want there to be a pedestrian, uh, pedestrian access to all of these commercial activities. Finally, it's important to know that the sidewalks and the distances to the closest elementary school and the park are just down the road, point four miles from this property. South is the Val Rico Elementary School, and just south of, south of that is the Val Rico Park. This site is not appropriate from a planning perspective for low densities and intensities such as single-family residential. Grocers, retails, shopping stations, they're all within walking distance. And this is a unique opportunity for an infill residential property to really, be really close to these non-residential uses. I'm going to briefly touch on the zoning, but not go into a lot of detail, because I think you need a little bit of the overview while you're making your comprehensive plan decision, since this board decided to make these companion items. It is located within the State Route sixty Brandon Boulevard overlay district. Although that applies at the rezoning level, we are incorporating those into our plan development plan. Um, and that is an area that's intended to improve the appearance of all of this new and existing development along this boulevard. It includes requirements for landscaping, building placement, and signage. This is the area, uh, it is currently a P D already. And it's very important that you understand that the current P D on this property that was approved in two thousand and six was approved for up to seventy-five thousand square feet of commercial general uses and eighty-six townhomes. Now, there was some testimony in the last comprehensive plan amendment that said that the density was increased in two thousand and fifteen, and that is not actually correct. There was a minor modification in two thousand and fifteen that took a portion of the existing office development and converted that to residential, which is a less intense use. So in two thousand and fifteen, there was not an increase in intensity on the site. And just a brief preview to what we'll speak about during the rezoning. Um, it was very important to us that you understood what was approved today. That seventy-five thousand square feet of commercial development along State Route sixty and far closer to the existing single-family residential than what is being proposed in the rezoning, and eighty-six townhomes. If you look here, you'll see that our setbacks are drastically increased away from the single family. And we have had a thoughtful design, which we'll talk about more in the rezoning presentation. Your professional staff recommends approval. Uh, the Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval. It is in line with the county's vision for Brandon, and it will allow much-needed units. We talk about the housing crisis all the time. Um, I know Commissioner Kemp talked about units being built all the time, but there is a drastic shortage of housing to meet this, the need. Our supply is far below the demand right now, which is causing some of the problems that we're having with affordability in our community. So we would respectfully request your approval for this future land use change. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we'll open up this public hearing to speakers that have signed up to speak. And with that, I have, um, for this item for A, for the comp plan amendment. The, the first speaker is Donald, um, Bayansky. Did I butcher that too badly, Bayansky? Is attending virtually?
Mr. Bayansky yielded his time to me. I'm Max Forghey, I am the planner who's been retained by the neighbors. May I?
You may proceed, I believe. Can, Ms. Lundgren?
Thank you. Max Forghey. My address is two three six Southeast Forty-Fifth Street, Cape Coral, Florida. I have been a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners in good standing since nineteen ninety-three. I am here on behalf of Mr. Charles Botha and his neighbors. This is a future land use map amendment hearing. The applicant has asked you to amend the future land use map, uh, which is a component of the comprehensive plan for his benefit. He is entitled to do that. Um, this is a legislative hearing, and people are, um, entitled to speak and be heard. Uh, it's their First Amendment right to petition their government for redress of grievance, works both ways. You don't have to adopt this today, and I urge you not to. I want to, since we did not have an opportunity to rebut at the hearing on July twenty-fifth before the, uh, zoning, uh, hearing master, I, um, want to quote a few things that were said by the applicant's attorney. Uh, I think they are relevant to this matter. Uh, the first thing is that Ms. Bassel said.
Sir?
Ma'am? Ma'am?
Uh, Mr. Forghey, right now, we are on the public hearing for the plan amendment. So at this time, it's not appropriate to have, um, any testimony or discussion on the rezoning. That will be a subsequent portion. You will have the opportunity to talk about the rezoning subsequently. Once the public hearing has closed, we'll be going into the, um, oral argument process on the major modification to the zoning, and you'll have another opportunity then.
I, I, I quite understand that. I was merely going to say something that has been said already by your staff this evening. It's the same thing, that the project is sandwiched in between an area to the east and west that are R E S twenty, and, uh, that's the existing future land use category. Uh, and that these areas already have existing commercial development, so it's really a prime location for infill residential development. I want to say that this is not sandwiched at all. The subject property is not touched by RES twenty in any place for three hundred sixty degrees on its perimeter. This is not infill development. And furthermore, this is not, this will not result in a significant reduction of traffic, as you have been told. There is no way that you go from zero units to two hundred fifty-six units and reduce traffic. That doesn't happen. So I'm going to say that this, uh, you don't have to adopt this, you shouldn't adopt this. Uh, you have not had a thorough future land use map hearing on this. And the best thing.
Thank you, sir, your time has expired.
It's.
Thank you. The next speaker signed up to speak on this item is Elizabeth Belcher. She's also attending virtually. Or, or I guess she's in person?
I changed, I'm, I wanted to be in person.
Okay, great, thank you. You may proceed, you have three minutes.
My name is Elizabeth Belcher, I live at four oh six South Miller Road. I am in opposition of this project, um, number one, because of its density. It's not a slight increase, it's like double the increase. So the word slight is not a good word to use for this pro, uh, project. Um, our major issue here is infrastructure, roads, traffic, and none of that really is being addressed or, uh, being resolved. Uh, you wanna put people in boxes like sardines, and you don't address the major issues of traffic. We have projects like Bell Shoals that have been, have been promised to be finished, and they're still under construction, and it frustrates the, the people who actually live in the community. I walk on Miller every day. I'm upset. You talk about putting sidewalks, virtually nobody walks in Miller. This is going to affect our community in, in a, a larger grand, and the develop, the, the developers come, they do what they need to do, they make their profits, and then they leave. None of those people live in Val Rico. Val Rico is a community made up of single-family residents, not apartment buildings. The only structure that is five stories high is that commercial building across the street. Nothing exceeds three stories high in our area, nothing, not the multi-use, not the residential twenty. None of it does, and they're going to build three to four stories. And they're going to, uh, sandwich people into that property, not to mention the entrances of going on, from that, um, development into Brandon Boulevard and, uh, Winn-Dixie, I mean, excuse me, Miller Road. We have a Hungry Howies there that you can barely get out of already. They're going to, they first said they were only gonna have an entrance there, and now it's going to be an ex, an exit and an entrance. That traffic hits very closely, or those entrances butt up to each other where Winn-Dixie is and, um, uh, Hungry Howies. Traffic is a major issue. I don't know how many accidents need to occur for you guys to listen to the fact that sixty is a four-lane highway, Miller is a two-lane highway. People that actually walk on the road should be scared for their lives, because that, those entrances are not going to work. This project is far ahead of the development of the infrastructure and roads that we need worked on before all these people move in. I understand we need housing, but this is a very huge project. The density is ridiculous for this area.
Thank you, ma'am. Your time has expired, thank you. The next speaker is Charles Both, B O T H E, Both, I believe.
Uh, yes, ma'am, uh, my name's Charles Bothy, I live at twenty-three oh three Highway sixty, which is right between Val Rico Road and Miller Road. Highway sixty is an eight-lane road leaving Brandon, and at Val Rico Road, it goes to six lanes. In front of my house and my neighbor's house, uh, Bayansky, which is halfway between Val Rico and Miller Road, it goes to four-lane. It is a terrible bottleneck there. I can't tell you how many times I go to turn in my driveway, and people are going down the bicycle lane and in the grass to try and pass, and it almost hit me. There's been many accidents there. Um, we were told that Highway sixty was gonna be improved and widened. Uh, that's what they told us at the first virtual meeting we listened to about this back at the beginning of the year. And they said it was gonna be started within about two weeks. They, they have paved the road, but they haven't widened it. That's not even, uh, funded yet. I just can't believe that you're gonna put in this project, which is gonna be to the east of me, and in, in just a few weeks, there's another project you, you're all gonna vote on just to the, to the, uh, west of me, that is the same thing. There's gonna be six hundred something units put in if all this is passed. We agreed to residential nine seven years ago, and now you wanna double down on that. It's too much for our, for our neighborhood. It's, uh, it, it just won't accept that. There, it, we don't have the infrastructure there. I think that that should be done before you go putting all these apartments in. We agreed to residential nine, not residential twenty. That's not just a slight increase, that's doubling down on it. So, thank you.
Thank you, my apologies, my microphone would not work. Thank you, sir, I appreciate your time. Um, the next speaker is Kevin Reali, I believe.
I think that's on another item, uh, Madam Chair.
Okay. Then the next speaker is Nicole Nugenbauer?
Uh, they're with the applicant team, and we've already used, uh, the applicant time, so they won't be speaking. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I believe the next person who is not on the applicant team is Sharon Bass.
All right, I have, uh, Sharon Bass. Well, that's way on down the line, so I'm gonna go through the names in the order of which I have them, and allow, ask you to help me with who is on the applicant team versus those that are here for the public. So I have, after Nicole, I had David Smith, which, that may be part of your team. Ryan Williams, Joe DeChristina, Stephen Dougherty.
Part of our team.
Those are, all of those individuals are part of your team?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Steve Henry?
Uh, yes, he's our transportation engineer, available for questions.
Okay, Edwin Ecclestone?
Also part of our development team.
Isabel Albert?
Also part of our development team.
Okay. You brought the whole.
I tried to be efficient with my comments.
You brought everybody here, okay, we, we don't wanna leave anybody out, obviously. Bryce Pinson, Ron House. So Sharon Bass is a, a citizen and not part of your team?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so, is Sharon Bass available in person?
Sharon, I believe, is virtual.
Is virtual, okay, we'll get this down, we'll get this right. Ms. Bass, you were recognized. Ms. Bass, you are recognized. You have three minutes.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak to the Commission this evening. My name is Sharon Bass. My address is 9314 North Highland Avenue, Tampa, Florida, 33613. I am appearing tonight on behalf of Mr. Bothie and his neighbors to appeal to this Commission to please take a look at your growth management strategy. The whole purpose of the growth management strategy is to make sure that there's an efficient planning process in place to develop areas so that the services are provided for the people that you're going to bring into the area. This area has traditionally been a rural area, and I think if you look at the maps provided by the Planning Commission, you'll see that most of that land is still in large residential, single-family development. There are not a lot of the multifamily units in this area. The concern is, we are, if you approve this development project and approve the increase in this, the comprehensive plan amendment, you're going to create one of the things that your own policies seek to avoid, and that is massive urban sprawl. Already, this community is plagued with issues regarding traffic and the availability of services in that area. Unfortunately, even though there are plans in the future to provide those services, it seems like the funding of those projects is a long way off. The concern of the neighbors in this community is that by approving this project, you're going to dump more and more families into a community that's already struggling to keep up. It's not going to serve the county, it's not going to serve any of the residents, even the future residents of this community. So we're asking respectfully that you consider very closely your own policies and procedures and plans before approving this project.
Thank you. The next speaker is, is Max part of the applicant team? Yes?
He just spoke.
I think Max was the man who spoke.
Max was the first person that spoke earlier. Okay, great. Thank you. Todd Pressman?
Yes, I am with the applicant's team.
Oh, okay. So you're not interested in speaking at the, okay. So those are the last speakers I have signed up for this, for the plan.
Madam Chair, we do have people in person.
Oh, we have persons in person. Okay.
My name is Robert Padilla. I live at 212 Ranja Lane in Valrico. I live in District Four in the Bonterra Homeowners Association, directly behind Windexi and Hungry Howies. I come here as a representative for all 90 homes. I am the HOA president for my community. I would not call a slight increase to traffic, I would not call it a slight increase to traffic when you double the units allowed during the current zoning. That is quite substantial and understated. I would like to implore you to consider facts outside of metrics and what I would refer to as the eye test. Those metrics are skewed and misrepresented in the evidentiary hearing and conflicted with the DOT traffic study a few years back. As it stands, the intersection of State Road 60 and Miller is a cluster of traffic and dreaded area during rush hour. It substantially backs up going both ways during peak rush hour, during, due to, sorry, State Road 60 going four to five lanes down to three, and from three to four to five. The only relief is after you pass Miller going both ways, if there isn't an accident at Valrico Road or Miller Road. Miller Road is one-way going north and south with a speed limit of 40 miles per hour in a dense residential, a single-family area with an elementary school. Valrico Elementary is also located on Miller Road where my kids, where my children attend. And many of my homeowners that I represent also have children there or waiting for the buses on that corner. While schools in session, traffic is extremely congested and dangerous to navigate, especially exiting my neighborhood from Bonterra Road. At least, in the last six years that I've lived there, 25% of my homeowners have been in an accident coming out of that road because of the congestion and the blocking of traffic due to that from State Road 60 to Valrico Forest. That includes my wife with my kids when she was taking them to school on her way to work. This isn't the exception. This is the norm. School started two days ago, or yesterday, and it's been far worse than any year that I've, than I've seen. And granted, first and second couple, in the first few days, there are going to be substantial amounts of traffic, but this is, this far exceeds my experience in the last five years pre-COVID. There was a notable accident involving a Durant High School student with some, with some kids from my neighborhood at this, at this very intersection. Cars passing buses on this same intersection. As you can see, I listed, I laid out a letters from the Sheriff's Department, or from the Sheriff's Department and the school district, saying not to pass traffic on 60.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much for your testimony. Your time has expired. Are there other speakers that are present there to speak?
I believe that's all.
Okay. So with that, we will close the public hearing and open it up for discussion. Is that correct?
Generally, the board would allow for applicant rebuttal up to three minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. I missed that part. Sorry. Would the applicant like to offer rebuttal? You have three minutes.
Yes, ma'am. For the record again, Elise Bassel with Sterns Weaver Miller. Many of the comments that you've heard are transportation-related. We will go into much more detail during the plan development rezoning hearing on specifics with transportation, but I do want to note that transportation has been studied in accordance with the county's methodology, and our transportation engineer will provide you testimony that the trans, the daily trips per day are going to go down significantly compared to what is approved today. Again, this is not a clean slate, and we'll go into that in more detail. So when Mr. Both, for example, says that you can't go from zero units to 312 units without an increase in traffic, we're not going from zero units. We're going from a fully entitled commercial and residential development. Ms. Bass, I did read her bio based on some prior testimony, and I know, understand she's not a land use attorney, or she would understand that this is the antithesis of urban sprawl. Densification is exactly what urban sprawl is not. If we were coming in and having larger lots in an area that should be more intense development, that would be urban sprawl. She also mentioned that there weren't, that this was a rural area. As you could see from all of the graphics that we've displayed, there is nothing rural about this area. This is already an intense suburban development. And finally, she referenced that there were not urban services available, which, as you all know, within the urban service area, there are. And then finally, there was a comment made by Mr. Both that this was not infill development. The definition of infill development is development on scattered vacant sites within the urbanized, suburbanized area of a community in a predominantly developed area. This site is the definition of infill. And with that, we'll hold the remainder of our comments until the plan development rezoning. Just as a point of order, Ms. Lundgren, are we going to vote on this matter or hear the plan development before both votes are taken?
Our procedure for these concurrent zonings and future land use map changes is to have the votes occur both after both the hearing and the oral argument on the major mod. So we'll be going next into the major modification oral argument, and then having a vote on the plan amendment, then a vote on the major mod.
Thank you for that clarification. The development team is available, Madam Chair, for any questions that you may have on the comprehensive plan amendment. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. With that, we will move on to the major modification, item 220689, or MM 2206M89. And I'll ask the clerk to swear in anyone that's interested in speaking, for all persons that wish to speak on the major modification, 220689.
Please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Ms. Heinrich, you're recognized.
Good evening, Commissioners. Brian Grady Hillsburg, County Development Services. The rezoning app.
Oh, sorry. Thank you, Brian. Go right ahead.
The zoning application is, again, major mod application, 22-0689, is a request for a major modification on an 18.4-acre parcel on the south side of State Road 60 to rezone to allow for 312 multifamily units. Michelle Heinrich with County Staff will provide a brief presentation of the request, including a couple corrections to the staff report regarding a transportation condition and wellhead protection. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. Michelle Heinrich, Development Services. For this portion of the item, we will be covering the details regarding major modification 220689. The subject property is currently zoned PD 06-0464, as most recently modified by major mod 15-0538. As you heard, the PD currently permits 75,000 square feet of commercial general uses along State Road 60, as well as 86 townhomes in the southern portion of the site. Under this modification, the applicant seeks to remove the commercial entitlements and utilize the entire site for 312 multifamily units. The site is located in the Valrico community on the south side of State Road 60, which is a four-lane arterial highway. This portion is within the State Road 60 overlay, requiring buffering and landscaping along the roadway. No waivers to those requirements have been requested. The general area around the site consists of a variety of both residential and non-residential uses. Also, the site is located in the urban service area. I will note that the staff report mistakenly identified the site as not being within the wellhead protection area. However, since that staff report was filed, we have confirmed that the site is located within the wellhead protection area. However, it does not alter our findings, as the property is within the urban service area provided with public services. Single-family residential development does exist, exists adjacent to the site. Therefore, compatibility was evaluated by staff. The project is maximizing building heights at four stories, 58 feet. This height meets or exceeds the two-to-one additional setback on all property lines except the front, where it's not applicable. In addition to internalizing the buildings, the project is providing buffering and screening with specific things that were previously approved. This includes a six-foot-high solid PVC fence in green, black, or brown along the eastern boundary, a six-foot-high wall along the southern boundary, and a six-foot-high solid fence along the western boundary. Buffers within the eastern and southern boundaries will consist of natural vegetation in addition to the fencing. The project has been found to be consistent with the comprehensive plan by Planning Commission staff, and no objections were received from reviewing agencies. Based upon these factors, staff does recommend approval, subject to proposed conditions, including tonight's revised conditions, which I believe have been handed out to you, and I'll show on the elmo. And what I'm showing you is a change to condition number nine, which clarifies that the project shall be permitted one restricted right-in, left-in, right-out access connection on State Road 60, subject to FDOT approval, and one full access on South Miller Road. I'm available if you have any questions.
Thank you very much. With that, we will hear from the applicant. The applicant offers oral argument, and you have 10 minutes set aside.
Thank you so much. With your approval, I will share my screen.
Go right ahead.
Thank you. Can you see that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, great. So again, you know the general location of the property. This does show the future land use map. For the record, as you know, this is a companion case to the item that we just heard before. This item, this project is located within the urban service area, again, part of the Brandon Boulevard overlay district, which provides aesthetically pleasing requirements to new and existing development along that Boulevard. It is in the Valrico County-wide planning area, but not in the Brandon Community Plan. I think you've heard a lot tonight about the adjacent zoning and uses, but to the north, there is a mobile pond park, an office building, and the post office. To the south, a single-family residential subdivision. To the east, single-family residential. And to the west, a single-family residential property, CG Shapping Center, RSC 6 Stormwater, and single-family residential. Again, we talked about the nature of the urban infill development within the USA. This includes all of these items all along State Road 60, intense commercial development, and a great infill opportunity. Again, that infill is really the scattered sites that are already within an area that is suburbanized, and that is exactly what you're seeing here today. Now, let's talk a minute about the existing entitlements. I always like to say, when there's an approved zoning, that this is not a clean slate. So we're not going from zero to 312 residential units. The current PD zoning, which has been amended a couple of times, was approved most recently in 2015 for 75,000 square feet of commercial general uses and 86 townhomes. Now, prior to that, it was approved for 95,000 square feet of commercial general uses and 55,000 square feet of business and professional uses. So the citizen testimony that you've heard, saying that it was already intensified in 2015, is just incorrect. It was actually, the entitlements were reduced. So today, the entitlements permit 75,000 square feet of general commercial uses and 86 townhomes. Our request is to amend the existing zoning to remove all of the 75,000 square feet of commercial general uses and the 86 townhomes, and to replace that with a 312 multifamily unit at 16.89 units per acre. Let's spend just a minute looking at the project. As you can see, the project has multiple stormwater compensation areas and storm ponds up against 60 for engineering purposes. It is, has seven buildings. It will have a clubhouse and amenities. But I think what's more important is looking at the approved development compared to the proposed development, because that's really the choice that you're making today. It's whether to keep the existing 75,000 square feet of commercial and 86 townhomes. If you notice, the building setbacks on the existing approved zoning are only 40 feet. The proposed building setbacks, particularly which are adjacent to the single-family residential, have increased substantially from 40 feet to 110 feet, 185 feet to the south, and 96 feet along the upper corner. We have spent a great deal of time, the development team, going over a very thoughtful design. We have changed this plan multiple times, in fact, after meeting with the community, to provide greater setbacks, buffering, and screening that far exceeds the Land Development Code minimums to mitigate the potential impacts to the adjacent single-family residential uses. As you can see from our building placement, we've also internalized the buildings to provide this increased separation, just another way to mitigate any impacts. I do want, really briefly, before I turn it over to our certified planner, to talk about the fact that we proposed, we proposed full access on Miller, but the county requested, and in fact, required a full access on Miller Road. If this board does not want full access, we're amenable for an exit only, as we had originally proposed, but I know that will come up in neighborhood comments. So with that, I'd like to take a moment and introduce David Smith.
Commissioner David Smith, 401 East Jackson Street, Director of Development and Zoning, Sterns Weaver Miller. As indicated by Elise, this, this project is, is well-placed in a corridor that's designated in the vision for the comprehensive plan for additional suburban and intense development. Repeating again, there's 20,795 new residents anticipated for the Brandon area, which demands an increase in supply in this particular area. The subject property, while the comp plan proposed would allow up to 300. The subject property, while the comp plan proposed would allow up to 371 dwelling units, is only proposing 312. So even it is being considered in the scale enassing associated with it to fit into the neighborhood. Compatibility is demonstrated on this graphic that you're now seeing. Not only do we have large internal setbacks, but when we look at the built environment, these are upwards of 400, 500 feet from the closest residential, single-family homes in the area. And in addition, the development is consistent with your comprehensive plan with respect to the location of medium-high-density residential in corridors that are on your MPO 2050 transit concept map. Overall, we're not asking for any waivers. The proposed major modification allows for development that's consistent with all these goals of infill urban service area and maintaining maximized density in these corridors. How much remaining time do I have so we can make sure that we get transportation?
You have three minutes, three and a half minutes.
I'll talk a lot faster then. This has already been shown how the setbacks are much better and greater. Not only there's greater setbacks in this area, but we've also gone to extensive effort to come up with greater buffers. As you can see, this is the southern buffer. We'll have fence, existing vegetation, and greatly setback for the developments in the area. The only time we have a structure that is close, it's within 20, actually 20 feet, that's when there's a small garage building. Otherwise, they're well setback. And right now, I'll transfer to, over to Steve Henry, our Transportation Engineer.
Steve Henry, Lincoln Associates, 5023 West Laurel, Tampa 33607. What you have before you, as indicated, the site is currently zoned for 75,000 square feet of retail and 86 townhomes. So what we've done here is a trip generation comparison of the approved, trip generation for the approved use versus what we're proposing. The green is showing the approved zoning, which would generate about 5,282 daily new trip ends, whereas the proposed would be about 1,416, so a significant decrease in the daily traffic. And this next graphic shows the AM and PM peak hours. Again, the green shows the approved, blue shows the proposed. AM 214 versus 126. And then the PM peak hour, you've got 506 versus 122. So, you know, when you talk about traffic in the area, this is a significant decrease. But in addition to that, if you look at your staff report, it shows that both 60 and Miller do operate acceptable level of service. Our analysis that we have done shows it operates at acceptable level of service. In addition, the existing plan shows two access points, full access points, to Miller Road. We are reducing that to one access, and again, the original proposal was an exit only. So that concludes my presentation, unless you've got any questions.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just in conclusion, you have recommendations of approval from Development Services, from the Planning Commission, and the zoning here in Max are also recommended approval. We reserve any, I'm sure we don't have any time for rebuttal, but we respectfully request your recommendation, and we look forward to any questions that you may have. Thank you so much.
Thank you. You actually will have an opportunity for rebuttal, but right now, we're going to open it up to oral arguments, limited to the party of record. And we'll hear first from the proponent testimony, that 10 minutes has been set aside. Are there any proponents for this project that would like to speak to it? Again, it's limited to the parties of record.
I don't believe we have any in person or signed up.
I believe Mr. Pressman is signed up as a proponent, and I believe he was a party of record in the original hearing.
He is.
Can you hand me, Madam Chair?
Yes, we can.
Can you hand me, Madam Chair?
Yes, we can.
I'll keep this very short. The points have been made. Hands down, what's proposed for this development is far better and less intense than the current entitlements. Just the commercial alone can have a tremendous damaging effect on the residential community. Some of those businesses are open 24 hours, fast food restaurants, odors, traffic, noise, strangers. The buffers are tremendously many times better than the current entitlement. I think that's very evident. And I'll just say, hands down, in every manner, what's proposed is better than the current entitlement. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents that are parties of record that are interested in speaking? Not seeing or hearing any at this point. Are there any opponents that are parties of record that wish to offer testimony this evening?
There's persons in the audience that wish to speak.
Have them come to the podium and state their name, please.
Commissioners, Max Forghey, 236 Southeast 45th Street, Cape Coral, Florida, member of the American Institute of Certified Planners. This constitutes spot zoning, which is not illegal in itself, but is always suspect. It is a spot future land use map designation as well. I want to say, and I won't take long, that I have not, I do not think that my clients have received a good opportunity to participate in the future land use map amendment process to help the county identify the best future for their neighborhood, and I do not believe that they have been given an opportunity to speak for more than three minutes on any subject. And I think that's unfair. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other opponents that are parties of record that would like to speak and offer testimony?
Good evening, Commissioners. Robert Padilla, 212 Ranja Lane, Valrico, Bonterra Homeowners Association, HOA President. Consider the facts. Quite a few county employees, appointees, and Commissioner White can attest to what I've stated earlier. They also live in and around Bonterra.
Excuse me, sir. Sorry? Excuse me, sir. Wanted to confirm, is this document that you, the document that you placed on the Elmo on the overhead, is that part of the record from the zoning hearing master hearing? Was that shown, or was that placed into the record?
No, ma'am, that was, that was just given to me yesterday or two days ago.
Okay. You'll need to take that off the overhead, please, because it's not permitted to be shown now, since it wasn't part of the zoning hearing master record.
Oh, I apologize. Double-sided, does that matter?
Thank you.
He may proceed.
Does it matter, is double-sided, is the same document?
You can't show the document if it's not part of the record. But you can proceed to speak on the record of the zoning hearing master.
Point of personal privilege, it sounds as if he may have a different document on the other side, and he's just asking if he can flip it over. Perhaps that document was shown at the ZHM hearing.
Correct. It was just, it was an illustration of the document from the last hearing.
Okay. If that document was part of the record and shown at the ZHM hearing, then you can proceed with that.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. I have the chief, I have the advantage of having a chief architect and three civil engineers within my community, all with firsthand experience in various issues related to...
I'm sorry, sir, that's the same document that you just showed and you just said was not part of the record.
It's the same, it's the same reference, ma'am. This letter is accompanied by this picture.
He did not show this at the hearing.
Okay. If it wasn't shown, neither of those were shown at the zoning hearing master hearing, correct?
They were. They were shown.
The letter is dated yesterday, so there is no way it could have been shown. So you won't be able to proceed with showing those documents. However, please proceed with your testimony, and please remain on the record.
Yes, ma'am. One such experience is the hands-on experience working with the State Road 60 widening project from Valrico Road to Dover Road. The landing question would be used as a water retention area by swift mud due to being the lowest point of, lowest point between Valrico Road and Dover Road, not if, but when State Road 60 is widened. According to the DOT traffic study, way before the explosion of growth within Hillsburg County, it does not paint a favorable picture to develop the land for apartments, since this section between Valrico Road and Miller are rated as the worst of the bottlenecks noted on the traffic study for State Road 60. I was informed there was an approval for an unsafe turn lane waiver, or something to that effect, given to the developers, even though the county acknowledges the current conditions are unsafe. Yet, some would like us to believe the development would reduce traffic. 320-plus units means 640 cars for residents, since the average is 1.8 cars per household. That does not include the leasing staff, groundskeepers, utilities, service vehicles, or visitors. The other two civil engineers are also specialists in transportation, which should be considered in this, in your decision, which they described as the intersection being incredibly inadequate for the current traffic conditions, let alone adding future construction, residential, some without serious upgrades, and relief on State Road 60 and Miller southbound. Bottom line, the developers paid for the traffic study that is usually in their favor, but the DOT study paints a far different picture despite being a few years older. I'd like to note that notice posted had the wrong information to participate and had been taken down for over a month since, before the meeting on the corner of State Road 60 and Miller, which I believe is a violation of public notice rules. For what it's worth, it also occurred around the same time that the land clearing started in that area as well.
Are there any other persons that have, were, were limited to the party of record speaking to as an opponent offering testimony?
My name is Elizabeth Belcher. I live at 406 South Miller Road. I'm asking the Commissioners to put themselves in the positions that we are in. We live there. We're residents. I don't think any of the Commissioners live on Miller or 60, so they will not experience the traffic, the density, the high density. They will not experience the privacy invasion of four-story apartment buildings, regardless of the buffer, that you guys will not experience what we experience. I walk Miller every day. I live there. I go to Wind Dixie. I try to get out of Wind Dixie. I try to get out of Hungry Howies. We live there. It is not good infrastructure. 60 is not good infrastructure for this project. Please do not put the cart before the horse. It's an irritation to the community. We are single-family residents primarily. We have mobile home parks, people who are over 65 that probably barely can drive, and you're going to add 312 more units, which will probably double the cars. Again, commercial uses the traffic that's already there. They're adding residents to the community, and the zoning continues to want to be changed because of the market, because of money and greed, and what the developer is going to profit more from, not for the benefit of our community, not for the benefit of Valrico. We are a rural community. I have more than 1.5 acres of land. We have trees, we have animals. We are not only suburbia, but we are a single-family community that owns our property, and we would like to continue that way, or decrease the density of this project and the height of this project. Single-family is restricted to 30 feet in height. This is going to be 58 feet. It's too high, and it will, it will invade our privacy and make our roads worse and more dangerous for the people who really do use the sidewalks on Miller and do drive out of those entrances and exits on 60 and Miller. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents that have signed up to speak and that are parties of record?
Yes, Charles Bothy. I live at 2303 Highway 60. And it's not just this project that's going in. There's going to be another project in just weeks that you're voting on for another 300-something units just to the, to the west of me. It is just too much to put in there before the infrastructure is put in, before Highway 60 is widened. I've been there 40 years. I've seen the growth, and it's too congested now. What you're going to put in there, or what is being proposed, is too much to handle, the road to handle, until there is the widening of Highway 60. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents that are parties of record that are here this evening or virtually attending that wish to speak at this time? There's three minutes left for opponent testimony. Seeing none, we can return to the rebuttal by the applicant. You have five minutes.
Thank you. First, I would like Steve Henry to address just briefly the issues with respect to what transportation improvements we have to make to our site access around the perimeter of the property. Steve, are you on?
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you.
Yes, so we are, we will be doing on State Road 60, there's currently a full median opening there. As indicated in the conditions of approval in our meetings with the DOT, we will be modifying that to be a left-in, right-in, right-out only. We'll be adding a right turn lane. We're also extending the eastbound left turn lane at the intersection of 60 and Miller. And then also, we are doing, as part of the design exception, we're adding a 10-foot sidewalk along Miller Road, along our property frontage.
Thank you. And Madam Chair, as you know, transportation is something that we rely on the experts for testimony, and I understand that the community has an issue and a perception about the existing traffic. But what this Board of County Commissioners has to consider today is the substantial competent evidence related to our impact on the roadway network. And what Steve Henry, our expert transportation engineer, has testified to is that we will generate 3,866 less daily trips than what is already approved. The only, that is the only substantial competent evidence that we've heard on that matter. There was some testimony about land clearing. Just to be clear, there has been no land clearing by the applicant. We are not even in that permitting process. There is no land clearing at this particular time. With respect to the buffers and the physical separation, just a reminder that I think Ms. Belcher's property, once you add her house and then our additional 185 feet, she's over 400 feet away from where this property is going to be. So we have really used thoughtful design. We have heard from your professional staff and our land planners that the project is compatible with the surrounding uses, and that's the only competent substantial evidence that we've heard tonight. Their testimony provided to you that their, this is an appropriate transition from commercial to single-family, that it has greater buffering and setbacks than what is approved today, that we're going to produce over 3,000 less traffic trips on the road than the current entitlements. And this is where the rubber meets the road, Commissioners, because it's very hard when development is going on vacant land that is already entitled, and we understand that it's very hard when communities change. But this project checks every single box that your comprehensive plan and your Land Development Code ask us to check. You tell developers where to go, and we have followed your direction, and we know that we need new residential projects. This is in the urban service area. It provides much-needed housing, and it's designed to mitigate the impacts to any existing residential, and it's far less intense than what is approved today. With that, we respectfully request your approval of both of these items tonight. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. We'll move on to the Planning Commission staff. The staff will provide a report on the compliance or non-compliance with the comp plan. You have five minutes, ma'am.
Yes, I will pass this over to Carla Yanos.
Thank you, Carla Yanos, with Planning Commission staff for the record. Can you hear and see me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. The site consists of four parcels with access to State Road 60. It's a principal arterial road, and Miller Road is a county collector roadway, as you've already heard. The site is in the urban service area. It is not within the limits of the community plan. Now, the... Now, the existing future land use, again, right now, is Residential 9 and Residential 4. We've gone over the existing maximum density and intensity, which leads up to 119 dwelling units. And obviously, the applicant is proposing, and they've specified during this rezoning, that they're going to be doing strictly residential. So they are seeking major modification, again, to the plan development 06-0464 and major modification 15-0538 to allow for the development of 300 multifamily apartment units. No commercials proposed. So the surrounding uses to the north and the northwest is Residential 6, future land use category, and that allows six dwelling units to the acre and a 0.25 FAR. Residential 20 flu is requested to the west of the subject site under CPA 2021-26. And to the south, southeast, southwest, and east of the property is Residential 4, future land use category. Now, the surrounding area is characterized by public institutions, light industrial, light commercial, single-family uses. The property has frontage on north State Road 60, which is a four-lane roadway, and it's considered to be a transit corridor. To the west of the property is a drive-through restaurant, and they've already explained all the existing uses, but just for the record, it's open storage, vehicle rental. To the east and southeast is the Wind Dixie Shopping Plaza, a drive-through restaurant, a barber shop. South and southeast are single-family detached homes. North, northwest, and northeast of State Road 60 is a mobile home park, community realtors' office, United States postal office. And one thing that I did notice that they didn't mention, that there is also a gas station in that area, self-storage facility, and auto mechanic shops. So when we're looking at this, we see that the development pattern is predominantly non-residential uses. So we're seeing that this is urbanized development. This is in the urban service area, and this is what we're seeing. So from a planner's perspective, from professional staff's perspective, this seems like a good transition, because you're providing something that is in between the commercial and in between the residential. It's something right between, and it provides a good transition. Now, overall, the major modification would allow for a development that's consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the future of Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan for the unincorporated Hillsborough County. The property does have access to urban services, which is consistent with Objective 1, Policy 1.2, 1.3, as well as Objective 2 and Policy 2.1 of the future land use element. The county's growth management strategy recognizes the benefit of concentrated growth where there are existing capital investments, such as centralized water, waste water facilities, major roadway access, and public services. Objective 12.1, Objective 22, Policy 16.2, all the way through 16.10 of the future land use element refers to like height, scale, consistency with development patterns in the neighborhood area. The proposed site plan that we looked at accomplishes a good design practice by concentrating the buildings towards the middle of the property. This creates a far enough setback to kind of offset any potential negative impacts to the surrounding single-family to the south. Furthermore, the site has internal and exterior pedestrian access that would enable a walkable development with access to public transportation, which is very important, and well access to goods and services. So this is something that we're striving for in our communities. Goal 13 of the community design component, which encourages infill development with urban and suburban area to create a mixed-use development pattern. The proposed development does create a transition, like I've mentioned before, between the single-family and the existing retail development. Furthermore, it breaks up the strip commercial development patterns, which, according to Policy 23.5, indicates that higher-density residential development is encouraged along major corridors as an alternative to continued commercial development. So again, we are reviewing these for consistency with the comprehensive plan, and we find it consistent because it does touch every single one of those policies. Like I mentioned, in summary, it's in the urban service area. It's a good transition between the uses. If we had to pick somewhere, this is probably a good area for the multifamily.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. With that, we'll hear from the zoning hearing master, the recommended summary from the county attorney's office.
The zoning hearing master considered the major modification request for the subject property, which consists of approximately 18.49 acres in Valrico, located on the south side of East State Road 60, west of South Miller Road, and east of South Valrico Road. The applicant's request is a major modification of plan development 06-464 to remove the existing approval for 75,000 square feet of commercial general uses and 86 townhomes, and add approval for 312 multifamily units at 16.89 units per acre. The subject property is designated Residential 4 and Residential 9 on the future land use map, and this zoning 06-464 was most recently modified by major modification 15-538. The applicant has applied for a comprehensive plan amendment, CPA 2127, to amend the future land use designation from Residential 4 and Residential 9 to Residential 20. The Board of County Commissioners directed the requested major modification be processed and heard concurrently with comprehensive plan amendment CPA 2127. The zoning hearing master summarized the zoning and uses surrounding the subject property to include properties to the north zoned planned development and ASC 1, developed as a mobile home park, office uses, a post office; properties to the south zoned ASC 1 and developed as a single-family residential; properties to the west zoned ASC 1 and developed as a single-family residential; and properties to the east zoned ASC 1, commercial general, RSC 6, and planned development and developed as a single-family residential, a shopping center, and a retention pond. The zoning hearing master found that the proposed project will provide setbacks, buffering, and screening that exceed the land development code's required minimums. The zoning hearing master reported that nearby property owners spoke in opposition to the major modification and raised issues related to traffic, flooding, school capacity, safety, Development Services staff identified no compatibility issues with the proposed major modification and found the request approvable with the conditions enumerated in the staff report, which is based on the applicant general site plan submitted May 24, 2022. The planning commission staff found that by concentrating the buildings toward the middle of the subject property, the applicant accomplished good design practices and created a setback sufficient to offset any potential negative impacts to surrounding single-family developments. As you heard, planning commission staff found the proposed major modification compatible with the existing and planned development pattern in the surrounding area and consistent with the comprehensive plan. The zoning hearing master found that the proposed major modification meets the intent and goals, objectives, and policies of the future of Hillsborough Comprehensive Plan for unincorporated Hillsborough County, and is compatible with the existing and planned development pattern in the surrounding area, and recommended approval of the request.
Thank you. With that, we are at the opportunity to discuss this issue and entertain a motion to vote on the ordinance for adoption of the CPA, as well as a motion and vote on the major modification. And the first, Commissioner White, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. To a couple things that Ms. Batzel mentioned. First, she said there's been no land clearing on the parcel. I mean, I don't think that matters for what we're considering tonight, but I'm pretty certain there has been some land clearing. I've noted it in the past couple of days. Again, it's the property owner's prerogative. I don't think it has anything to do with what we're voting on tonight, but I believe there has been some land clearing. Another thing that Ms. Batzel said is that infill development is tough, and it is tough, and we have to be very careful to get it right. It was me that delayed this last time and wanted to get this paired up with a rezoning, because, as I put it, there's a lot going on at this intersection. A couple of the residents mentioned that Hungry Howies Pizza. Let me tell you, it is tough today with no development on that parcel and downright dangerous to try to make a left out of there onto Miller Road. My strategy, if you want to make a left onto Miller, out of that Hungry Howies, as you're looking northwesterly to see if the southbound lane is going to be clear, you can miss cars because of the cars that stack up in the northbound turn lane. You can't see through them. My strategy, when I leave there, when it's busy, is to actually make sure that the northbound lane is good and clear. I actually go the wrong direction in the northbound lane for 100 feet or so, get my car pointed in the right direction, and check my mirrors, just to be sure that I don't get T-boned by a car that I've missed because I can't see it through the traffic that's stacked up in the turn lane. It's dicey. Now, I know that several of the commissioners, if not a majority on this board, are all about connectivity. I'm about connectivity as well. But I will tell you, in this particular circumstance, I don't think we need an entrance or an exit onto Miller Road. The proposed ingress egress would be lined up with the entrance to the Wind Dixie Plaza. So there's a plaza there. The neighborhoods just to the south are legacy sprawl projects that all have cul-de-sac roads, dead-end roads. It just, having that open, you know, you look at the other corners, you've got the post office in one corner, you have an auto parts store in the other corner. Having that ingress egress there just does not promote connectivity, as far as I'm concerned. And in fact, I think it makes an already dangerous situation more dangerous. If you want to access the Wind Dixie, you would just make a right onto 60, go through the light, turn into the Wind Dixie. The same's true for that Hungry Howies. There's an entrance on 60 so that you could just make a right into it. You look at the Bell Shoals Widening Project. Our experts on staff purposely designed that so that you cannot make a left out of some of the neighborhoods, because the T-bone accidents are so dangerous, and when you're trying to make that left, you have a greater chance of a T-bone accident. So our experts, in the case of the Bell Shoals Widening, have actually purposely designed it so that you have to make a right out of some of the communities and then do a U-turn to go the other direction. The same could hold true there for 60, and just to the east of that intersection, very close, and very close proximity, is St. Cloud, which is signalized, very easy place to do a U-turn. So I did talk to staff ahead of this meeting, and they've informed me that they would need a little bit of time to do some analysis and work with the applicant to see if eliminating that ingress egress would be possible. Another thing, too, you know, I come in with a good idea of how I feel about these projects, but I always listen to the public testimony, and I always reserve the right to be swayed by what I've heard from a member of the public. I'm concerned about Ms. Belcher's issues that she's brought forward about compatibility with respect to the height of the buildings. As you all know, it's about much, much more than height. It's also about the distance of the structure from those buildings, which therefore affects the angle of the line of sight. And then, do you have sufficient screening in that sort of case? So I'm going to make a motion, and I'm going to ask staff, my motion is related to the rezoning, so I'm going to ask staff how we would handle the comp plan amendment with respect to this. But my motion would be to remand this back to the zoning hearing master to specifically address the issues of height that have been raised by Ms. Belcher, and I'm going to ask that the zoning hearing master consider the distances and angles of the line of sight and whether or not the proposed screening is adequate there. At the same time that this is on remand, I'm also going to ask staff to work with the applicant on that entrance exit at Miller. Is that something staff can handle, Mr. Gormley, or should that be remanded to the zoning hearing master as well?
Commissioner, I believe if this is remanded to the zoning hearing master to look at the compatibility, the plan can be adjusted as well and take up a design that doesn't have access on Miller Roads. All of that could be taken up as...
So I'm just going to roll it all into a remand. That height compatibility issue, I would really like for the zoning hearing master to analyze the angles, the distances, the line of sight, take a look at whether or not the screening's adequate, and then to also look at that access issue.
Second?
Okay. Do we need to do the comp plan amendment before we address the remand, is my question?
So, Commissioner, while we're getting a remand date, a way to keep these two together, if that's the board's desire, would be to continue the plan amendment, remand the rezoning, and have them join back up after the remanded hearing.
I'm going to add the deferral of the comp plan amendment and the rejoining of the two to the motion as well.
Or continuance or defer?
Continuance, yes.
Okay. So we have a motion by Commissioner White, a second by Commissioner Kemp? Okay. Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
Thank you. I didn't know you were going to ask for continuance, and I had wanted to do this, but I had a recent trip out there to an event. And not far off the road there, I drove back and went onto a dirt road and went to a farm. Tell the dirt road, I think the farm maybe was 10 acres or a small farm. That whole area, and I just, it's, for us, you know, to be voting on it here, but having no idea, and I know you described it the last time, and I really wanted to go out there and get a feel, quite honestly, for what the area was like. And despite anything that's been said, and I know the image that most of us have of 60 is something that's much different than this area of 60. I'd say the same thing goes for 301, as it's in South County, and then as it approaches North County. But as the 60 goes out there, I mean, it is, to this day, still has very rural, you know, it has a very rural feel, a very, like you're getting out in the country at this part. And I know the single five-story building that everybody refers to, I mean, it just, it looks incredibly out of place, and, you know, it's really unsuited, and I don't think is appropriate. It's been done. But a lot of what's around it, you know, isn't developed. And I'll just say this, we can talk about, and I'm very much, you know, for looking at the urban service area, but any development we do here, whether it's what they're already permitted to do, is already infill, and it's already actually pretty to have 86 townhouses going in here. That's a handful, you know, in this area. And I don't, you know, I do think maximizing out the density in this area that is so far out, it might be in the line of the urban service area, which, right at this point, has been pushed out incredibly far by an amendment that was made some years ago to push out that whole place, which is totally rural at this minute. You know, I actually looked over both the plans. I feel more comfortable with what is proposed now. The commercial, which I think we need, the 75,000 square feet of commercial, you have, I was just looking up, the big grocery stores can be like 150,000 square feet, but the medium-sized grocery stores, we're talking about 40,000 square feet. I was just looking at a mini Target store, is 23,000 square feet. So that's about the 75,000 that we're talking there, you know? I think you need more of that integrated in some way. The 86 townhouses, that's, you know, that just strikes me as a more appropriate development. And to talk about doing the intensity out here is just, you know, we would be doing substantial infill there that would be, I think, more appropriate under what's permitted at this time. I'll just... I'll just say that that is my, and, you know, I also didn't have a sense necessarily of this when it first came, and I was really looking at it. As to the heart service, yes, there's 46 that goes out there hourly, and it goes from there to the Brandon Mall, and then you change buses and you go in to, to go other places, then the Brandon Mall. It's a 25-minute ride to the Brandon Mall. My drive from where I live out there was about an hour and 10 minutes. It was during rush hour, or hour, it might have been even 20 minutes, and there, there were storms and there were other factors. But it was, it's quite a long, long distance out. And it is, it is the end of the bus route out there, and it is a bigger station, but it's a lonely-looking station there where it is. I'm sure you're familiar. And certainly it'd be a, a great thing to be able to do more service. I don't know when. Hopefully, there might be a chance, opportunity for that, but, you know, as well, the roads out there are so substandard for, for anything that I'm very hesitant to do anything that would allow for more density, which I think is, I mean, we have what we have now, and I think that that is kind of appropriate. And I know you've talked before about tapering off, you know, and I, I think this is one of the tapering off areas despite where the line is, I'll say that. The other is, I'll just say that there's, about this particular amendment, and I just want to share this now, but I'll be bringing it up later, and I find this very disturbing. There's a map on page 90 of this, this piece. It's called the Hillsborough County, Florida Vision Map, which, as a commissioner here for six years, I don't know, you might have seen this before, Commissioner White, but it, it's in here. I heard it referred to before, and then I started looking this up, and I'm like, what in the world is this map that I've never been shown in my entire time here at the commission? It's a map that was put forward in July 2015 and was never passed, so it's still a draft. This has this big orange line going all the way out there. It's like this. This is high-intensity development line. Whoever made this map, why it keeps getting put out when it was never even passed, I also see other corridors on here that I find really disturbing as a, as a plan. I mean, I'd like to see us be looking at this as soon as possible to make sure that this draft never appears again. And I don't know why this was ever determined this way, because I think, I also see a line that I've asked about over and over again, this one that goes up in the northeast, that somehow everybody keeps trying to put density in there and high-density, you know, very intense transit service. And I kept, I've asked, I swear, 50 times, what in the world? Why, why, why does this keep happening? And I've never, ever, ever gotten an explanation. I start looking at this, and I'm going, where, and then I find out it's a draft that was never even passed by this commission, and why it keeps getting referred to. And I feel like it's an underlying element in this, and it's really inappropriate, the high-intensity, I feel, part of this map. And this and some other corridors in here that I have never had this explained to me and never seen it until this item came forward. So I'll just, I'll just put that out there. But I'm in total agreement with the remand. I think there's actually many other questions, and I'd, I'd be inclined, you know, I'm inclined to like the former plan rather than the newer plan myself. And, you know, I, I would just say that, also, it's, right now, it allows for 75,000 square feet commercial and 86 townhouses. Is that correct?
Yes.
And, and then this moves to no commercial, and then it moves to 256 units, or are there more?
I believe, if I'm, if I may have the floor, I believe it's 256 additional units on top of the 86.
Additional. I see. Because I kept hearing the 300, I was getting confused, and I, every time I tried to bring my screen back, it kept going, closing on me, and then I have to find, find my notes again. But I think, I, I find this not, you know, I, I have serious question. I'll just express that now, even despite whether we go back to remand or not, but I just want you to know where I am on this. And I'd like others to think about this, and perhaps, I mean, I just think it's, it's really unsuited for what was necessarily expressed here.
Commissioner White?
Thank you. I had no idea, Commissioner Kemp, that that's just a draft that was never adopted by the board. I'm, I'm going to.
I checked with our staff here.
Yeah. So I'm, I'm, I'm going to suggest to Ms. Lundgren, I, I mean, I imagine it's an applicant's right to present it at a zoning hearing master meeting, but, but if it's subsequently asked at a board, a commissioner, Board of County Commissioners meeting to be considered, I'm going to ask that you recommend to the board that we object to that on the grounds that it's not an official county document, if that's.
Could we ask the planning commission?
I'm not, I'm not saying, I'm not, I'm not saying that should be done tonight. What's done is done. I'm saying if you see that document in the future, if it's not an official document, I would implore you to recommend that the board, at a minimum, just understand that it's not an officially adopted.
Thank you, Commissioner White. Commissioner, the planning commission might be able to give us some guidance on that particular.
I would be very happy to, thank you. The vision map that was shown as part of Ms. Batzel's testimony was not included in the planning commission staff report, nor our backup. So I'm not sure where, if you were referring to the backup, that page.
It's page 90.
I wasn't able to locate it. I'm not sure who put that in the backup or where that came from, but I did see it as part of Ms. Batzel's presentation. That vision map is not adopted. I can confirm that. It was created as part of the Imagine 2040 Comprehensive Plan Research that was done with the various jurisdictions. So that was done with jurisdictional staff of the cities, as well as planning commission staff representing unincorporated Hillsborough County back in 2015. Again, not adopted, and we do not use that to create policy.
Okay. Because we keep, I keep feeling like there's a ghost underneath some of, I'm sorry, underneath, if I could speak, underneath some of all the proposals that have been brought to me, and I keep, I'm, I'm always going like, what, what, what is driving this? I don't understand. And looking at this was like I found the Rosetta Stone, you know? Finally. I, I, I just looking at it made me understand a lot of the questions I've had that have never been answered for my six years as a commissioner.
Thank you. And I, I, I will say, I have seen it before because I was very much involved in the 2015 Comprehensive Envision Plan. So it wasn't foreign to me, but I just didn't notice it in this presentation, but it is, it was something that was considered as part of that, that, that envisioning that was done during that time period. But again, that was before I arrived here as well. So, so we have Commissioner Smith in the queue.
And very quickly, I just want to, since this is going back, I'm certainly supporting that. But it's interesting to me that, as I was looking at, okay, what, what the current is and what they're asking for, I also tried to kind of envision it and think, well, if I was living in that area, I think I would prefer 86 townhomes with the little blocks of commercial up front, that I would rather have, knowing that it would generate more traffic, it would generate more traffic. And traffic is a big issue there. So that is a, a trade-off. But it is what it is, and it needs to be a lot better if it's, just as you expressed. If we're going to do infill and, and increase the density, then it, we need to make sure we're doing it right. Thank you.
Okay. We have Commissioner Cohen.
Yeah, very briefly, I, I'm going to support the motion for the remand. I think that, obviously, if, if adjustments can be made, particularly with the Miller Road piece, that, that should be looked at. You know, I, I just feel like I would like to offer a little balance to this discussion and remind everyone that we sit here and talk a lot about the lack of housing in this community and the fact that we desperately need more supply. And at past meetings, you know, we, we reject a lot of things that come in front of us. We, we reject at times if there's a coastal high-hazard area issue. We reject if it's outside of the urban service area and in the rural service area. We, you know, we reserve the right to do that for a lot of reasons. And what, what, what concerns me here is that this does check the boxes that we keep saying we want to see checked. And this, this project is on State Road 60. And while, while I think it's certainly within, you know, every commissioner's purview to see that perhaps one set of circumstances on the property would be better than the other, certainly reasonable to think that the commercial and townhouse combination would be better. But, but on the other hand, the traffic is the biggest objection that we heard tonight, and we have expert testimony telling us that this will cause less than what's already entitled on the spot. So, like I said, I am going to support the remand, but I think a lot of the elements for, that, for passage of this were established tonight. And, you know, I, I have a hard time, after all of the, the passionate testimony about traffic problems, to then basically revert back to something that we see the testimony telling us would actually create more traffic and not less. So, you know, I'm sure this will come back, and we'll have another shot at it.
Thank you. With that, Commissioner White?
Very briefly, Madam Chair, I just wanted to thank you for your support tonight, Commissioner Cohen. I, I just am simply asking for now that that access issue and the height issue be looked at.
And thank you. Thank you.
If I could just respond briefly for a minute, because I can appreciate where you're coming from, and I am a very much supporting a lot of development. I feel like we put, even though you can name the times that we haven't, we are laying down stuff all the time, and the city is laying down stuff, and there's entitlements that are all there. These entitlements are here already, and they're on rural land, and they were already upped, and it's Res 9. That's, that's pretty intense. I mean, I think Seminole Heights is something like Res 4. So we're not talking about not like, not doing housing and not doing some substantial. But I'm, I do think, you know, it, there, there are lots of places where we're doing lots more intensity and putting down a lot of housing. And, and so I just, the impression, I just kind of reject that, but I still look at where, you know, there'll be 86 more places there. That's a lot. Or who knows how many, or, or maybe, you know, something like the Res 4. I'm not sure how it works out, but they would, you know, want some more density with that. I'm not sure. But I've also been a big advocate of mixing the commercial and residential and not having that piece go away and having a monoculture of residential and having transit availability, of which it won't, it, it won't be able to solve. We don't have even a road good enough out there. It sounds like we're in real trouble with that, and we're not going to be getting to it anytime soon. It's not even on our, our list. So in matching up infrastructure, or at least getting infrastructure before we do these kinds of things, I just, you know, there's chances for it to be redeveloped with more intensity in the future if that serves it out there. But I'm thinking that there's a lot of areas internally that could use intensity and redevelopment that come way before that and would be, you know, would hold the promise that, that we're looking for.
Okay. Commissioner Kemp, you're in the queue, so that was your turn. Okay. With that, I'm, I'm going to ask for a vote, but I would like to make one, a couple of comments that, that address what Commissioner Cohen said. I, too, agree that we are in a situation where we are stuck between a rock and a hard place. We are being asked to create more housing. We have more people moving here than we have houses for, and we don't have the transportation infrastructure for being able to serve this community whatsoever, because we have not actually invested or raised the revenue to be able to do so. So we are hitting a wall. This isn't the first wall we've hit, but we are going to continue to hit a wall if we choose not to invest in our infrastructure, in our road infrastructure specifically. But at the end of the day, the planning commission and the zoning hearing master heard what is in our plan, in our comp plan, and recommended moving forward on this project, because it does meet the criteria of what we've established as part of our comprehensive plan. And when we think about the housing element that we just talked about, it's in line with that, too. So while I will agree, I will, you know, support the motion to remand it or continue the, the, the comp plan amendment and remand the zoning at this point, I think we have to get real with the decisions that we have to make with these kinds of choices. If we're going to stop growth because we don't have the road structure, that has to be acknowledged, that that's what we're doing. And 60 is a, is a major road, and this area has grown. There is commercial all up and down 60 before you get to this piece of property. It's nothing but suburban commercial. There's a grocery store right there. There's Hungry Howies, right? And a variety of other retail establishments to support residential community. So it is prime for it, but obviously there's some things that we need to find a way to solve. And if it's a road, we might as well just say no now, because we're not going to fix that road, because we don't have the money. So I'm willing to, to continue as, and I'm willing to remand it. But we do have to get real about the choices that we're having to make and how we grow moving forward. And with that, please take a roll call, though.
Chair Overman?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. If I, sorry to interrupt. If I could announce the, the dates for the.
Please.
Remand, the remand would be to September 19th at 6:00 PM, and the continuation of the comp plan amendment would be to December 15th at 6:00 PM.
So there's no way to do them again together?
Yes, they, they would join back up. Remanding, we'll remand the zoning to the 919 zoning hearing master.
Okay.
Continue the, the plan amendment to December 15th, and then the.
And bring them back together at that point?
Back together.
Okay. All right. Great. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Okay. We good? Please take a roll call, though.
Chair Overman?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thank you very much. Okay. We're going to move on to the small-scale amendment adoption for B2, item B2, HCCPA 2117, the Future Land Use Map Amendment for Oarsley Drive and Kingsway Road. Planning Commission, you're recognized.
Thank you. Ms. Andrea Papender will be presenting this item.
Good evening, Commissioners. Andrea Papender, here, Planning Commission staff. Are you able to see the presentation?
We can see it. There you go. That's better. Go right ahead.
Okay. Thank you. This is HCCPA 21-17, Oarsley Drive and North Kingsway Road. This is a privately initiated, small-scale math amendment. The site is approximately 5.21 acres. The current future land use category is residential four. So the original request of residential nine was part of the July 2021 plan amendment cycle. At the March 10th, 2022 Board of County Commissioners' public hearing, the applicant's revised request of residential six was continued to this April cycle. And the applicant has submitted a new application for the revised request of residential six. So the site is within the urban service area and the Cefner Mango Community Plan. So the site is within the urban service area and the Cefner-Mango Community Plan. The subject site is shown in a red outline and a yellow fill on the aerial before you. It is south of Interstate 4, north of Orsley Drive, and east of North Kingsway Road, and the site is currently vacant residential. There is an existing single-family residential parcel, kind of a donut hole on the aerial on the southwestern corner of the site. That is not part of this plan amendment. So this is looking north on Orsley Drive, shows the subject site that is currently Looking east on Orsley Drive, properties east of the site include a single-family residential and vacant residential. Immediately south of the subject site is existing single-family subdivision. And this is showing west of the site, towards Orsley Drive and North Kingsway Road. Across North Kingsway Road are single-family residential, vacant residential, and public institutional properties, including the Burnett Middle School and the Higginbotham Park, which are further southwest. And this is the back of the subject property that is facing Interstate 4. There is no interstate access at North Kingsway Road. The adopted future land use category for the site is residential four. Residential four surrounds the site on the east, west, and south. North across Interstate 4 are the agricultural estate 1 and 2.5, the residential 1, and the residential 2 future land use categories. The proposal before you today is to change the residential 6 future land use category. So moving from residential 4 to residential 6 would increase density on site by 11 units for a total of 31 potential units. The FAR would remain the same at a .25. And the plan amendment site does not meet the current commercial locational criteria Planning Commission staff did not receive any objections from reviewing agencies. Planning Commission is finding this plan amendment to be inconsistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the future land use element. Policy 1.4 and Objective 12-1 requires that new developments should be designed to be compatible with the surrounding community and the character of neighborhoods. While a change the residential 6 future land use category would promote growth in the urban service area, it would result in an increase in density that is not compatible with the surrounding area. The area is not transitioning to a higher-density development pattern. There is no trend or evidence of any development with a higher density in the residential four and the immediate surrounding area. Objective 16 and its policies focus on protecting existing neighborhoods and communities by restricting incompatible land uses. Policy 16.8 requires that the overall density and lot sizes of new residential projects reflects the character of the area. A land use change from four dwelling units an acre to six dwelling units an acre would result in lot sizes and densities that are incompatible to immediately surrounding residential uses. And that complete policy language can be found in your packets. It is also inconsistent with the Cefner-Mango Community Plan, specifically Goal 2, Strategy 8. The development potential for the site would allow for infill development, but it would not provide a compatible density with existing surrounding residential properties. Planning Commission recommends that the proposed map amendment be found inconsistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the future of Hillsborough Conference of Plan for unincorporated Hillsborough County. So that concludes my presentation, and I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we'll have the applicant testimony with three minutes per each representative.
Madam Chair, this is Todd Pressman. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
And can you see the PowerPoint, please?
Not yet. There we go. Yes.
Okay. Let me just make it a little bigger here. Okay. Madam Chair, Board members Todd Pressman, 202nd Avenue South, Number 451 St. Petersburg. The staff showing you the site. You'll see that we're located right on I-4, which is a major consideration, carrying 129,000 vehicles per day, and on Kingsway, which carries 3,900. I-4 is completely left out of Planning Commission analysis and consideration, and that's what drives this site. The existing land use pattern surrounding development does not include anything about I-4, nor does the analysis or impact include anything about I-4. The Policy 116.2 does call for gradual transitions of intensities, which is what we would be doing, is R6 into R4. It would be creation-like uses under Policy 116.3, complementary uses, mitigation of adverse impacts as a good transitional use. Additionally, R6 reflects a different economic level, being located on a roadway of a 24/7 intrusive noise, lack of view, intrusive light, and intrusive odors versus the more established neighborhoods. To the south is commercial development. Your housing policy notes to provide ample housing policy with a broad range of types and price levels, which this would do, which is reflected to I-4. And Cefner Community Plan, as of course, other elements note, support infill development, development within the urban service area. But as I've shown you, I-4 is directly abutting this site. It's the major determinant, which is one of the reasons and one of the economic reasons for asking for the site. As you can see, it's a major element of the site. It's what drives this site. It calls for a different land use category than what you would typically see in this And likewise, this is the property right next door, right abutting. We feel that R6 meets a number of the housing and comp plan amendments. It's certainly complementary. The only difference that we're asking for is 11 dwelling units maximum, which would be the yield of the site, and would be a good, again, transitional category to the R4. That's immediately to the south and commercial development shown on the plan. Appreciate your attention. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Is there any other representative on your team that wishes to speak?
No, you have just me.
Okay. All right. This is a public hearing, and I think we do have a few people signed up to speak. This is B3. Yes, we, starting, well, Ms. Elise Batzel, she would be with the applicant team, correct?
That would be with the prior review. That was his case.
We're on B2.
We're on B2? Okay, sorry. So that's Ms. Grace McComas. Is she available virtually? Did she stick it out?
Yes. On the phone, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. You're recognized.
Okay. Grace McComas, 8050 Darby Street, Cefner. Please find this proposed changing of the comprehensive plan amendment inconsistent with our comprehensive plan. County members have prepared an extensive comprehensive plan that is in place until 2025. The Planning Commission and the Planning Commission Board found this to be inconsistent. We need to listen to the staff. That's why we have them. Land use attorneys are paid to influence your opinions. That's their job. We need to adhere to our policies and plan until they are changed by the next comprehensive plan. This spot zoning, changing a long-term amendment for one property, is wrong, and using this process to increase density is equally wrong. We citizens work hard to develop a community plan, and this change is inconsistent with the intent of the Cefner-Mango Community Plan. Infill, it was to be consistent with the future land use plan. The appliance attorney stated I-4 traffic as a density. This is definitely not a proper use to be considered as a gradual transition of land use criteria. R6 is not a transition from RS1 on the north to R4 on the south and east, and Higginbotham Park on the west. Additionally, the traffic study shows states that there will be a required right-of-way from this property for the widening of I-4. There is no access ramp to I-4 from Kingsway Road and probably will not have one due to the entrance of the way emotions site on I-4 is found at that area, and an exit ramp would destroy part of Higginbotham Park. Mr. Pressman has previously commented on the irrelevance of Mrs. Elizabeth Belcher, the other Mrs. Elizabeth Belcher, and my comments due to the fact we don't live in close proximity to the site. We live in unincorporated Hillsborough County. What happens in one community affects other communities. As citizens, we are given the right, privilege, and responsibility to speak our opinions, and our comments are as valid as his. Also, our comments are not out of context, derogatory, or untrue. Thank you for this opportunity to speak.
Thank you. The next speaker assigned to speak on this item is Elizabeth Belcher.
Yes. Yes, hello. I'm Elizabeth Belcher. The other Elizabeth Belcher, I live in Cefner, Florida. During a previous land code hearing...
Yes, so we have two Elizabeth Belchers signed up to speak, so there are two different Elizabeth Belchers. Please proceed, ma'am.
Yeah. Like I said, I'm the second Elizabeth Belcher. During a previous land code hearing, the BOTC stated they did not want to change a land code that would conflict with the community plan. This land code request does the same thing, conflict with the Cefner-Mango Community Plan. We agreed that they could infill but not intensify. The policy in infill within the urban service area is not to go to the edge of the urban service area to intensify development, which is absolutely incompatible with the surrounding area. In a previous hearing, I believe it was stated the closest development with the same intensity is 1.9 miles away. This is not close enough to be compatible. Previously, the representative made a big point about how I and others protesting this change did not live next door. I live in the Cefner area. All bad zoning affects me, and allowing this type of land code change, which is in essence a rezoning without oversight, sets a precedent that affects all of Hillsborough County. I have been repeatedly told that as long as your property abuts the more intense zoning, it is allowed to have the same zoning. This application appears to be no more than an attempt to break the urban service line and get a spot rezoning. The applicant emphasizes the land butts I-4, and that justifies more intense zoning? No. There will never be an I-4 off-ramp there unless the county is willing to destroy Higginbotham Park and put the off-ramp right next to Burnett Middle School. Another thing that the applicant was trying to do is lead the board down is the traffic study. It was done during August with school without. Orsley Street is almost right across the street from the school zone sign for Burnett Middle School. There are no sidewalks, no street lights, no school crossings. The infrastructure is not there to support more intense development. It is instead a recipe for tragedy. Follow your employees' recommendations and your oversight citizens board and deny this land code development change. Thank you.
Thank you. And do we hear from the other Elizabeth Belcher now?
I believe the other Elizabeth Belcher is not signed up for this item.
Sorry, it was listed twice, so I was like, okay, let's figure this one out. Okay, great. That is, it's our speakers. The applicant would like to offer a three-minute rebuttal?
I would, Madam Chair. And let me first clarify to the Belchers. I always have great respect for any citizen that comes forward to speak. My only comment was that the board needs to be aware whether they are closely located neighbors at the 300-foot radius who are directly impacted by potential development or not. That's all. Their comments are very well taken. They're both very nice ladies, and nothing else was implied by that. I think vocational aspects of neighbors is very important. But the fact is that this site is severely impacted by I-4. It is different than virtually all other property in the Cefner-Mango area, unless it's abutting I-4. That does affect the use of the property, affects the economic element of the property. It also allows, it does allow for a good transition from R6 to R4. And it's not a question of density, it's a question of impact to the property. What I showed you is traffic figures are strictly traffic counts by FDOT in the county, which are very high on that particular road. But it is a 24/7 noise, odor, and light impact that we have to take into account and what would be the best economic element for housing at this location. Again, this request started at R9. The commissioner sent it back, and we came forward and lowered it to R6, trying to meet in the middle or make a compromise from what's R4 now. So we've gone to a lot of efforts and actions to reduce by about a third what was originally requested for residential units. And that's all that's requested here. So it is a highly impacted site. It is in the USA. It's a nice infill site. It'll be a beautiful residential for the folks who would like to live there. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Board discussion? I don't see any. Do I have a motion?
Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
I'll move to deny, again, based on the testimony. And as I've said, Res 4 is infill. It provides for housing, it puts housing in a place where there weren't houses before. And Ms. McCombe has always done very compelling testimony, and I think she makes a good point, too, that I'd like to be taking in more often. When they talk about spot zoning, when she talks about that being a spot zoning, our comprehensive plan is supposed to be something that we look at in the big picture over the long run, not that we piece by piece increase densities too. You know, but where we have the big idea of what we're going to do and how we're going to do it and where it makes sense. I think it's, again, we're putting down lots and lots and lots of units, houses, everything else that we're doing in Hillsborough County. It's an endless black hole to think that we could ever satisfy what is coming at us. But I'll just, I'll make a move, you know, I'm okay with Res 4 as it's approved here. So I'll make a motion to deny.
We have a motion by Commissioner Kemp, a second by Commissioner Smith. Any other discussion? Please take a roll call vote.
Chair Overman?
Yes.
Cohen?
No.
Hagan?
No.
Kemp?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried, five to two. Commissioners Cohen and Hagan voted no.
Thank you. I voted yes. Yeah, she got it. She got it right. Okay, we're on to item B3, HCCPA 2209, the Future Land Use Map Amendment for South U.S. Highway 41 and County Line Road. Planning Commission, you're recognized.
Thank you. Ms. Gillian Massey will be doing this presentation. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. Let me just take a moment to share my screen. Thank you. Is everyone able to see my presentation?
We can see it. Go ahead.
Good evening again. This is Gillian Massey with your Planning Commission staff. Tonight, I will be presenting on HCCPA 22-09, which is U.S. Highway 41 and County Line Road. Some background on the site is that this is a privately initiated, small-scale map amendment. The site's approximately 7.7 acres in size, has a combination of three different future land use categories currently. Currently, there's 6.35 acres of natural preservation, 1.02 acres of agricultural rural 1 to 5, and 0.33 acres of light industrial plant. So the majority of the site is natural preservation. The proposal before you this evening is to change the entire site to light industrial This is a location map of the... This is a location map of the April 2022 cycle of the comprehensive plan map amendments. H C C P A 22-09 is located in the southernmost boundary of Hillsborough County. It's located in the rural area and within the limits of the Little Manatee South and South Shore Community Plans. Here's an aerial photo of the site, where you can see it highlighted in green on the north side of U.S. Highway 41. Hillsborough County Conservation and Environmental Lands Management Department staff has indicated to us that this land was surplus by the Southwest Florida Water Management District. It's currently undeveloped. The C S X Railroad runs along the northern boundary of the site, and further north and west, there are agricultural uses. Adjacent light industrial uses are located along the north side of U.S. Highway 41, immediately to the east. And these uses include open storage of trailers, RVs, boats, and trucks, and a lumberyard. East and south of the site, across the Highway 41, is forested agriculturally designated land, and this falls right at the boundary of Manatee County. Further south down U.S. Highway 41 into Manatee County, there is a small airport and a correctional facility. This is a photo of the site facing north on U.S. Highway 41. This photo was taken from County Line Road, where the highway is on the right side of the photo, and the railroad tracks are over to the left. Again, this is facing north, where you can see more of the railroad tracks over to the left side of the photo. But as you can see, it's undeveloped currently. This is a photo facing south on U.S. Highway 41. This is looking across the street at the subject site. And over to the right side of the photo, you can see part of one of the light industrial uses previously mentioned. This is an area for storage of trucks and RVs. So this is the adopted future land use map for this site. Currently, it's, as mentioned before, mainly designated as natural preservation with a small portions of agricultural rural 1 to 5 and light industrial plant. In the surrounding area, there's mainly agricultural rural 1 to 5 to the north and south, light industrial plant on the same side of U.S. Highway 41 adjacent to the site. And as you can see here, in green, there's the coastal high hazard area boundary, and also there are wetlands in the area. The proposal before you this evening is to change the site all to light industrial The proposed amendment would allow for a decrease in residential density and an increase in commercial intensity. So as you can see here, the existing potential is one residential dwelling unit, and the change to light industrial planned would not allow for any residential density. Currently, approximately 22,000 square feet of non-residential development would be permitted, but the change to light industrial planned would allow a potential 251,559 square feet. Planning Commission staff has reviewed this application, and the Planning Commission has reviewed it, and it's been found to be consistent with several goals, objectives, and policies of the comprehensive plan for unincorporated Hillsborough County. And all of these policies are in your staff report for your reference. Objective 4 relates to the rural area, and Policy 1.4 discusses compatibility with surrounding land uses. There is currently a light industrial planned designated land directly adjacent to the subject site, and it is bound by the C X X Railroad to the north and U.S. Highway 41 to the south, which provides a buffer from the agriculturally and naturally designated land. Objective 10 relates to land use suitability. Policy 10.4 states that no additional areas will be designated with heavy or light industrial land use planned categories within 500 feet of rivers associated with wetlands and/or other surface waters. There are some wetlands within this area of the site, however, they're not associated with any rivers, so we found it to be consistent with those policies. Objective 16 relates to neighborhoods and community development, and in Section 1.4, Goal 12 of the community design component, discusses rural development patterns. The immediate surrounding area is primarily agricultural and light industrial in character. There are no residential developments in the immediate area requiring buffering or screening from. The surrounding agricultural and natural land allows the opportunity for a transition to industrial uses. Finally, the site is located within the limits of the Little Manatee South and South Shore Community Plans. The Little Manatee South Community Plan indicates that a goal is to protect environmental areas. However, there are no environmental easements or restrictions on this site. The community plan supports the establishment of light industrial uses within light industrial categories and encourages light industrial warehouse and office uses to utilize the existing rail lines. In addition to Planning Commission staff's review, this application was sent out to multiple agencies for comment. There are some informal comments in your packet for review, and you will find that there were no objections to this application. The Planning Commission found that this proposal was consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the future Hillsborough Comprehensive Plan for unincorporated County. And this concludes my presentation. I'd be glad to answer any questions if you have any. Thank you.
Thank you very much. With that, we have three minutes set aside for each applicant representative. I do have several applicant representatives signed up to speak. First, Elise Batzel.
Madam Chair, the development team has four representatives here, and if it pleases the chair, I will speak for all four.
Sounds like a plan.
Good evening, Commissioners. Kevin Reali, 401 East Jackson Street. May I share my screen, please?
Sure.
Is that visible?
Yes, it is. You may proceed.
Thank you. So Commissioners, what we have before you tonight is a unique application. As far as reviewing applications to change a comprehensive plan, typically, the focus is on the compatibility. And I think that the compatibility here is pretty patent based on the development pattern there and the location between the railroad tracks and the highway. So what's unique is, I'm sure the Commissioners don't see very often a request to go from N to L I P. And so when the landowner came to us and discussed this application, we really had to dig in before we could suggest moving forward. And when we dug in, we learned that this application is reasonable and supportable, and the Planning Commission staff, through their review, came to the same conclusions. And so I'll talk about compatibility slightly, but I'll focus more on the history of the site and try and get some visuals to make the Commission understand how we got here today. So again, Planning Commission staff covered this, but briefly, the site is slightly over seven and a half acres, located between U.S. 41 and the C S X railroad tracks, just north of Manatee County. On the southwest portion of the site, the rights of way for the railroad and the highway actually converge so that the subject site is bordered by those two rights of way and L I P designated property with light industrial development on the site. It's not in the coastal high hazard area. All of that is to the north of the railroad tracks. And when we look at the future land use map, you can see that coastal high hazard area across the railroad track. So there's that separation, that height of the railroad track that creates that separation. But I'll skip to this map. This is a map of what the future land use map will look like if you approve this today and send this to the state. So the request is to go from three categories to L I P, but on another slide, I'll show how, I mean, really, the root of the request is to go from N to L I P. This is consistent with the strip of development here between 41 and the railroad tracks, and that's what this map really shows. The compatibility is there, and there's, you know, natural buffer by the highway and the railroad tracks to the surrounding agricultural. And these uses in this area are not incompatible with agriculture uses anyway. It's consistent with the surrounding uses and the Little Manatee Community Plan. So what I'd like to focus on here is the property history and why we're here today. I can liken this best, if any of the Commissioners have seen, a request to change an institutional land use to some sort of, some private category to permit development. For example, if a state agency sells a site, or if a school board sells a site. Those usually have some sort of designation that require a change, and that's what's happened here when Swift Mud owned the property. So this property was originally deeded to Swift Mud as part of a large preservation for a Cockroach Bay Preserve. There's no development on the site. Swift Mud had this land surplus. Because of that deed containing all of its preservation land for Cockroach Bay Preserve, what happened at some point is that entire deed was broadly designated to the N category, the whole legal description being lumped into, you know, however that process happened in the past. And the other categories, and I'll show you another slide, are more likely due to mapping discrepancies as lines were drawn with rulers when some of these lines were drawn, right? We didn't have the G I S technology because it's been this way for some time. What happened subsequently is this land was sold by Swift Mud because there are no environmental attributes on this portion of the land, and the sale is indicative of that. And there's no environmental restrictions, easements, or preservation on the land. I reviewed the title policy for the property. Planning Commission staff reached out to various agencies and asked if there were any restrictions, and even your own real estate staff reviewed and identified that there was nothing on the site, but gave Planning Commission staff and our team some other easements to review and confirm. And we were able to confirm that none of those impacted the subject property. So, and I'll come back to the slide, but so what happened, and what you're looking at here, Commissioners, is this is a G I S representation of all of the land that was in the original deed when this property went to Swift Mud. And if you can see, all of the green, this huge area of land, is essentially the Cockroach Bay Preserve. And then you can see the subject property here completely isolated, and not just isolated, but isolated between the railroad tracks and the Highway 41, along with all of these other L I P properties that are developed with uses. And so what seems to have happened is, however Swift Mud came to have that property included in their deed, you know, Swift Mud didn't have any need to separately designate this property, and so it all got designated together. If you look at your future land use map, when you zoom out, you can see the Cockroach Bay Preserve there in the larger area, and all the other portions of the deed are contiguous with this piece being isolated and separate from the rest. And then I think the most convincing visual here is, if you take that G I S slide and you overlay it on your future land use map, that blue boundary representing the edge of the G I S that we had created, and so that they line up, you can see it's a little off-center, but when you align that boundary, you can see that the whole goal of the deed was to preserve that Cockroach Bay Preserve. And this property seems to have just been lumped in as surplus. Now that Swift Mud has sold it, and it has no environmental restrictions, just like when an institutional property is sold, it's appropriate to change to a category for a private party to own it. And to that end, the most appropriate land use category is L I P. Very briefly here at the end, because I don't know that it carries a lot of weight for the decision today, but Planning Commission staff did note that there are three categories listed here, and this is a zoom-in of those three categories. You see this very little sliver of L I P, and then this strip of A R. And again, going backwards and looking at the D chain and trying to piece together the past, it's hard to say how that happened, but more than likely, these lines were drawn on some sort of section line. And so with a more exact G I S system and legal description, this will clean that up. But really, the balance of the request here is to go from N to L I P, consistent with that neighboring development. And with that, I'll conclude to say that, you know, we're a piece of property here with no environmental significance compared to what was included with the Cockroach Bay Preserve. To that end, Swift Mud sold it, separate from that preserved land. No environmental restrictions entitle or existing with local agencies, and consistent and compatible with development nearby, the development pattern in the slightly larger area, the community plan, and then, of course, with staff and Planning Commission's support. So with that, we request to transmit and for your approval. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. We have time set aside for three minutes per speaker. I see no one signed up from the public, other than the applicants sign up. Is anyone from the public that would like to speak to this item?
Here's no one in the audience.
Excellent. Okay. With that, I'm assuming the applicant doesn't need a rebuttal?
Reckless, Madam Chair, no rebuttal.
All right, thank you very much. I'll open it up for our discussion. I just had a question that I'd like to ask the applicant, if possible, before we move on. But Commissioner White, did you?
I was just going to say Commissioner Smith and I had asked how that one sliver got the natural preservation land use designation on it, and the applicants answered that question. And it's bordered by 41 and the railroad tracks, and it's adjacent to a similar land use, so I'm supportive of the change. But I won't make a motion right now, Madam Chair, because I know you want to ask.
It is just a real quick question, because I don't know that I remember to ask it when we briefed and things like that. But I noticed that right across the area, and there's a lot of trees on that particular piece of property, and there's lots of trees across the road. And something that we think about is, you know, the amount of trees that actually do absorb a lot of water, and that's a lot of, it's close to that one land right on that coastal high hazard area. So this is an example of where I'd really like the zoning to actually come with the compliance, so I kind of have an understanding of what they're going to do in that area. Because if that clears, if all that land is cleared, it takes that water absorption off. And you notice right across that way is some wetlands. So I'm worried about the road that goes through that in terms of flooding. And so I was just curious if there's any guidance on kind of what will happen with that particular piece of property. I'm not saying that would impact the actual zoning change, but I am curious about the water flow that might occur if those trees are basically mowed down and it's cleared. Would that, has the flooding impact or the potential flooding impact been considered for that across the road? That was my only question to staff, if there was any consideration there. Does anybody know?
We don't have a detail on how that would work, but in any development, the existing conditions and the existing rate of water discharge would need to be not increased by any development activity. So to the extent that there are some features there that are absorbing or holding water, they would need to be essentially-
Addressed.
Addressed and replicated through-
Okay. Just one of the observations when I looked at the map, I was like, all that water is just going to run right across the road and flood the road. So if that's not the case, fine. So with that, we, Commissioner White?
I'll move approval.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner White, a second by Commissioner Smith. Please take a roll call vote.
Chair Overman.
Yes.
Cohen.
Yes.
Hagan. Commissioner Hagan.
Who's there a minute ago?
Kemp.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried, six to zero.
Excellent. Thank you very much. On to B4, H C C P A 2210, future land use map amendment, Tony Alessi Senior Avenue, formerly known as Comanche Avenue and Anderson Road. Planning Commission, you're recognized.
Thank you. Ms. Carla Yanos will be doing the presentation for this item.
Good evening, Board of County Commissioners. This is Carla Yanos with Planning Commission staff. Let me share my screen. This is a comprehensive plan amendment, 22-10, Tony Alessi Senior Avenue, formerly known as Comanche Avenue and Anderson Road. This project is a privately initiated, small-scale comprehensive plan amendment- This project is a privately initiated, small-scale Comprehensive Plan Amendment on approximately 10.4 acres, and it's in the Tampa service area. The project is located northwest, in the northeast area of Unincorporated Hillsborough County, and it's adjacent to the city of Tampa, which is located to the northwest, and the property is found within the limits of the Town and Country Community Plan. The property is accessible from Comanche Avenue. Just note that that street was actually renamed as Tony Alessi Senior Avenue. So if you hear me interchange between Tony Alessi Senior Avenue and Comanche, just note that it's the same road that we're talking about. The property is located south of Comanche Avenue West, west of Hesperides Street North, and east of Anderson Road, and north of West Hillsborough Avenue. The next few slides, I'm going to give you, I think you've already, potentially, the Planning Commission's already seen these pictures and some other staff members, but for the purposes, we'll go over, you know, the site visit pictures, and I'll explain to you what they are. So this is facing southeast of Hesperides and Tony Alessi Senior intersection. And then this is east of the subject site, which is Pierce Middle School. And I know they were curious about where the access was from that school. As you can see, it's mostly sidewalk, and I think there's a short access, you know, a little further to the right of the screen on that picture that you see, and I think that's for employee parking lot. This is the rear side of the school, and as you can see, there's a playground, and there's some parking spaces there. I think that's for visitor parking. Now, if you head from Hesperides and the Tony Alessi Senior Avenue intersection, you're heading west along that. So this is the view that you're going to get. So it's basically industrial-like. So again, we're heading west on Tony Alessi Senior Avenue. And this is the subject site before we reach Anderson Road. And this is the intersection with Anderson Road and Tony Alessi Senior Avenue. So on to the flu. The property has an adopted future land use of Office Commercial 20, and is proposing to go to light industrial future land use category. The existing future land use allows community commercial type uses, office uses, mixed-use developments, and compatible residential uses. The proposed light industrial flu allows processing, manufacturing, storage of non-hazardous materials, warehouse showrooms with a max of 20% of retail occupancy. The area is composed mostly of industrial uses with single-family residential to the north and two public schools to the east. The subject site is less than 300 feet from the city of Tampa to the south, and it has similar industrial and public, quasi-public, future land use categories. So as you see on the screen, I have highlighted the city of Tampa limits in yellow, and this is where it's at. And if you compare, you know, the future land use categories, they're very similar. They almost have the same thing. Impacts. So the subject site, again, it's 10.4 acres in size. The property has an existing future land use designation of Office Commercial 20, as previously mentioned. That allows you 20 dwellings, an acre, and a floor area ratio of 0.75. And the maximum that you can get on the property is 208 dwelling minutes or about 340,000 square feet of non-residential use. Under the proposed light industrial, we're eliminating the residential use, and we're proposing a 0.75 maximum FAR. This will ultimately produce about 340,000 square feet of non-residential use. So it allows for the same amount of square footage. The only difference is we're eliminating the residential, and the uses change a little bit because now it's more light industrial. Now... So consistency. Planning Commission staff did review the Comprehensive Plan, found the proposed map amendment to light industrial future land use category is consistent with the adopted policies and objectives of the Comprehensive Plan. We found two main areas of consistency. The property is surrounded by an area that is mostly developed with light industrial, heavy commercial, light commercial agriculture, public institutional use, et cetera. The proposed light industrial future land use designation is compatible in this area, and the current zoning is manufacturing, which is technically not consistent with the existing Office Commercial 20. So by changing that future land use category to light industrial, it actually bring the zoning into compliance. This request was heard before the Planning Commission on July 11, 2022, with a vote of nine to zero for approval. Planning Commission recommends that HCCPA 22-10 be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the future of Hillsborough Comprehensive Plan for the Unincorporated Hillsborough County, and recommends forwarding this recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners. And I will be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. This is a public hearing, and we have three minutes set aside for each speaker. I have three speakers that may be part of the applicant team. I'm not really sure. But the applicant has three minutes to speak. I have Chris McNeil, Chris McNeil, and Lauren Pallardi. So I have two speakers, but go ahead.
Yes, ma'am. Chris McNeil, McNeil Jetering, 15957 North Florida Avenue, representing the applicant. I just want to mention a couple of things here. I'm going to try to share my screen. Can you see that?
Well, we're almost there. There you go, I believe. It says Vigo Importing Company.
There you go.
Okay.
Okay. Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for your service tonight. Appreciate that. I just want to add a couple of notes here to the great presentation I've already presented. And one is just a close proximity to the airport here that I'm showing in this image. The second is just highlighting that light industrial, as she mentioned, that this would be bringing this into compliance. And you can see that it's surrounded by that light industrial existing land use now with the future land use that it is. And one other thing to note, that this proposed future land use is actually less of a trip generator than the existing future land use. And with that, I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. I was hoping you were done with your presentation because it just disappeared off the screen, so I'm assuming that was done. Are there any other applicant parties that wish to speak to this? I have, is Lauren Pallardi here to speak as an applicant or as a participant?
She's here, available for any questions.
Is she part of your applicant team?
Yes, I'm part of the applicant team. This is Lauren Pallardi.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right. Well, this is a public hearing, and we don't have anybody else that's signed up to speak to this item, so unless there's someone that I don't see, and given that there's no need to rebut, I'll close the hearing and open it up for board discussion. Commissioner Kemp?
Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve very gladly, and I'll just say that they had asked our office, within my time as Commissioner here, to rename the street Alessi. Vigo is just, they're an incredible business that we have here in Hillsborough County, been out there, been here for its generations, that they've been there employing 175 people and shipping millions and millions of pounds or packages of, but not only rice, but delicious soups. I'll do my ad, and I went home to make sure my olive oil was Vigo olive oil. It was. But I'm really happy to do this, so motion to approve.
Great, thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Kemp, a second by Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Smith, you signed up to speak too?
Yes, I grew up on Vigo foods. My grandmother cooked with Vigo olive oil and Vigo yellow rice. I'm delighted to support this.
Okay. Anyone else want to celebrate Vigo? Commissioner White, you're recognized.
Ditto. I'm a Hillsborough County native and, you know, grew up on all that great food, and I just want to know if the applicant brought a, you know, a nice pot of chicken and yellow rice.
Exactly. I know I have a whole lot in my cabinet, but I'd really like to have some now. Okay. Commissioner Myers, would you like to chime in, or Cohen?
No, I'm really hungry though.
I'm really hungry though now, yeah. This has really got us going here. Okay, with that, I'm going to ask for a roll call vote.
Chair Overman?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan? Kemp?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried, six to zero.
I think we caught Commissioner Hagan running into the kitchen to get some of that yellow rice. It's on the stove, so. With that, I'd like to ask for the board's motion to vote to consider the ordinance for the adoption of the Small Scale Map Amendments, CPA 2209 and CPA 2210.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Cohen and Kemp, and a second by Commissioner Myers. Please take a roll call vote.
Chair Overman?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan? Kemp?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried, six to zero.
I believe that's our agenda. Ladies and gentlemen, we are done for the evening. I'll call the meeting adjourned.